All right, welcome back to the August 25th, 2020 regular City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we'll start with the invocation by Dr. Jim Terrell. Is Dr. Terrell here? Fantastic, thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and stand.
Thank you for letting me be here tonight. Now with me, as we call forth whatever our beliefs is, our faith, our sense of oneness with life, that we join together in blessing this meeting. We bless the fact that this meeting can take place in a free country where we express and know who we are and express freely who we are. So I know that this meeting tonight is blessed because the City Council, the community, the police, the firemen, the teachers, all the people who support this community move forward as one, expressing the ideas that work best for the community and working in peace and love. So I say thank you, God, for the success of this meeting already done. So I release this word into the law, the success of this meeting is already expressed, and so it is. Amen.
Amen. Please join me. Please place your hands over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right, thank you. We'll go into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council and committee activities. This is also the time to request matters to be placed on a future agenda. Slightly differently, Councilmember Dixon and I talked about doing the exact same A1, which is to request a resolution opposing Prop 15. And so as a matter of joint request under A1, I just want to point that out because that's a little bit, it's not, it's a little different. All right, so we'll start with the City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council and committee activities. Mr. Hurdman.
Most of my time over the past weeks have been spent involved with airport issues related to the general aviation improvement program, working with staff here in the city, with our consultants, on lease negotiations as it relates to the two new FBO operators and the one limited FBO operator. I attended a Babo Island Improvement Association Board meeting and learned of their plans for the formation of an assessment district for the completion of undergrounding the remainder of the island. I attended the monthly vector control trustee board meeting, also attended, along with Diane, a Board of Supervisors meeting last month and made comments related to the GAIP and the award of contracts to the two FBO operators and the one limited FBO operator. I attended a technical departure subcommittee meeting and yesterday held the monthly aviation committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Well, it's August, it's vacation time, and that's what we did. We went on vacation, so I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Things didn't slow down while you were gone here, Duffy. So the CDMRA board meeting met. Diane, Will, and I met with the Solid Waste Recycling Subcommittee. I met with Dave Webb and Public Works and the Police Department representatives on parking strategies for Old Corona Del Mar. Our ad hoc short-term lodging committee met. I also met with Craig Batley of Burhite Realty and Scott McFetters at Craig's office. I also met with Simone Jurgis and some Goldenrod residents who are very concerned about construction traffic. And that led to a meeting that we're having this coming Thursday night. It's an ad hoc town hall meeting for District Six. I believe we have a flyer for this. And this meeting is really to discuss all the conversations that have been going on about traffic issues in Corona Del Mar during, since the COVID issue started. And we've got a lot of community members that have sort of self-mobilized into groups to talk about different issues. We've got a group that's working on one-way streets in the village. We've got a group that's working on residential parking program. We've got people that are working together to come up with a community survey so that we can find out how our community feels about these different things. And we unfortunately are continually harassing the Police Department about loud vehicles. I apologize for all the calls and everything, but people are just so upset about the loud vehicles. It seems that during this time of COVID, there's a feeling that people don't need to obey the laws and don't need to be concerned about any inconvenience to anyone else. And so I spoke with John Lewis this week, along with Diane, on some noise issues in general. And John tells us we need to continue to call the Police Department. And I did have someone from West Newport call me when there was a gang of motorcycles starting at that end of town and saying that they're coming your way. And I thought, you know, if we could have sort of watchdog groups in different areas that know when these loud vehicles start at one end of town or which direction they're going, that perhaps we could have a greater impact. But John assured me that we should continue to call the police on those. So we're having our town hall meeting on this topic on Thursday at five, from 5:30 to 7:30. And you can register for this by going to newportbeachca.gov/district6towhall. And I believe we've got quite a few people signed up, and we'd like to have as many people as possible weigh in and discuss these issues so that we can gather consensus. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on the noise issue, I'd like to A1 to look at ways to expand the municipal code and code enforcement program to address municipal code violations, including short-term lodging and noise complaints, and include a study on municipal code citation fees. So I'd like to A1 that item. And a report on my activities during the month of August. It seems like so long ago that we haven't had a meeting, but Sheriff Barnes had a really fascinating conference. We haven't reported on this ever. I don't think so, because it was early August, so I don't think we have. And Councilmember Brenner and I, I don't know, maybe others. It was a virtual meeting on cybersecurity issues. And I know Councilmember Brenner's had this experience, I'm having this experience, and many public officials are, and this was really for public officials, co-sponsored by ACCOC, about having fake Facebook and Instagram accounts created. And you had one, and I received an Instagram or a message, Facebook message, direct message from Councilwoman Brenner, which, and I knew just, I said, "How are you?" At six o'clock in the morning or something. I didn't think, and I wrote her on her email, "Is that you?" And of course, it was not. So this is becoming very common in the public domain, yes, but also with public officials, people taking our public images and activities and being able, in fact, I had someone say, well, I think, presumed they were another friend, and said, "Well, how is City Council doing?" So they're kind of getting into our personal activities or our public activities, for that matter. So it was very useful. It's just really a heads up because these incursions into our privacy are coming from Russia, Eastern Europe, and China. So we just have to be aware. Did you talk about Grant Howell?
I forgot.
Well, many of us attended the groundbreaking at Grant Howell Park. If you wanted to finish and just tell your story.
One second. We actually have a slide for it, so we'll pull it up. No, that's okay, we'll pull it up. Go ahead.
Okay. So we've got the Grant Howell Park Rehabilitation Project is beginning fall of 2020, and we did the groundbreaking yesterday. So we're really excited about this project. And if you'd like to look online and see what's going on there, you can go to newportbeachca.gov/granthowold, H-O-W-A-L-D, park, and then you can see what's going on and follow the progress.
Yeah, it's a great improvement project. As Councilmember Hurdman mentioned, we've been spending a lot of hours on aviation, airport, general aviation issues. And we both spoke at the August 11th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And their meeting, they met today, and so waiting to hear any reaction to their closed session meeting or any other information we will get from Supervisor Steele. And then there was an aviation committee meeting last night, and so the community is engaged and hoping that we are moving forward. I know we're moving forward on the right path, we just want the Board of Supervisors to support the city of Newport Beach. So write your letters to the Board of Supervisors in the next few weeks. We'll be, in fact, Tara Finnegan's office will be, John Pope will be doing a community-wide communication program before the next Board of Supervisors meeting, when their decisions will be made on these actions at John Wayne Airport. And then we seem to have a regular weekly standing meeting on short-term lodging issues, Mr. Hurdman, Ms. Brenner, and myself, and Simone. And we'll continue to be meeting to come forward with Phase Two of short-term lodging in the near future.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to A1 support of Proposition 20. Proposition 20 is looking to correct the errors that slipped through the cracks through AB 109, Proposition 47, and Proposition 57. Together, these laws and propositions have gutted a lot of our law enforcement tools. They've made it so that retail thefts are not very punitive in how we can respond to them. They've arguably resulted in more violent crimes that have been deemed nonviolent, which is an error that many in Sacramento even admitted they overlooked when they passed all these. And so Prop 20 is a way to help clean up the books and also clean up our streets. I'd also like to lodge a couple conflicts here on items number nine, 10, and 12. I have a conflict due to my prior employment in the wireless telecommunications industry. Often, there's a tail involved with when you last received employment due to an industry. And so those, even though I'm not in that industry anymore, still apply to me today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to speak to a couple of projects that are going to occur here in the fall. And the first one is the East Jetty Repair, and that's the jetty that's closest to Big Corona Beach. And it all started when our Director of Public Works, Dave Webb, decided to go fishing, and he was walking out on the jetty, and he saw that there was quite a bit of slippage of the rocks and some damage to the public walkway. And so the directive is to repair the corner of the public walkway in this photo that you see here, and add what's known as armored stone to raise the elevation even so it's safe to walk on. And this work will take place this fall, and the temporary impacts along the beach and Corona Del Mar parking lot may be felt by some folks. Everything will be barricaded as necessary, of course. And the project may go into the winter. The bigger project, which everyone on the Harbor Commission is happy about, and Councilmember Duffield championed as a part of the overall dredging effort, is the discrete dredging of the harbor entrance. And this is in partnership with the Corps of Engineers, who are behind it all, of course. They do these kinds of projects, and it's a $3 million project. It's 100% federally funded. And it is an outcome of the trips Duffy, Dave, and I made to, and Chris Miller to Washington DC to try and pry some federal dollars loose. And this project will dredge the entrance to the authorized depths of the harbor at 20 feet at low water. And it'll take out about 70,000 cubic yards of what Chris Miller calls clean, coarse-grained beach-quality material. Sounds good to me. And it'll be loaded, it'll be loaded into a disposal scowl and towed and disposed in the nearshore zone outside the surf, just east of the Babo Pier, and down about midway towards the entrance of the jetty. So replenishing the sand on the beach with the spoils of the dredging from the harbor mouth. And the sand, the sand is naturally washed ashore, apparently. And the status is currently out to bid through the Corps, anticipate contract award in September, start construction in October, November, and end construction about March 2021. So this will involve a barge in the entryway to our harbor and tugs and the rest of it. Public Works has provided outreach to the Harbor Commission, and of course Parks, Beaches, and Recreation, and City's actively involved for smooth construction and coordination. And if you have any questions, you can contact Chris Miller at Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll run through a few. Newport Mason Unified School District Trustee Michelle Barto spoke to the Newport Beach Foundation, which was great. Appreciate her time. That ACCOC event with Sheriff Barnes was great. I was on there, too. Yeah, so if I post anything that offends you, I'm sure someone else wrote it. Speak up Newport, Sheriff Barnes and Chief Lewis. Thank you, Chief, for doing that. Learned quite a bit on that one, too. UC Irvine has a new clinic in Orange County over in the Fashion Island area. Looks great. They're spending a lot of time on whole-body wellness, and especially now that we're certainly gotten used to the phrase comorbidities, we recognize the value of that even more so. And so it was, it was great being at their ribbon cutting. I was involved with all the other mayors in Orange County, creating a PSA that will be run through OSHA, the School of Arts. And they have these great masks they had us, they gave us with our city logo on it. And so it should be very professional, and it's a discussion, making sure people, you know, continue to have good health out in public. And then we talked about Grant Howell, the groundbreaking there. Newport Mason Unified School District started yesterday. Normally, especially with our Police Department, we'd be telling everyone to remember 25 miles an hour in school zones. You should probably still think about doing that, but everybody's virtual right now. So my son got to start kindergarten yesterday on Zoom, which is interesting. So Sherman Gardens has their annual soiree coming up this weekend. It will be interesting, too. They are obviously doing a lot of protocols in place, so one hour at a time. You're only allowed to be there for one-hour blocks, limited number of people, but Sherman Gardens is one of those institutions in our community. It's worth supporting, so appreciate that. Two quick last things. September 2nd, 6:00 PM, we'll have our Housing Element Update Advisory Committee meeting. And then, starting very soon, Thursday night, which is going to be a kickoff, Newport Beach Restaurant Month. So a lot of our restaurants have been working really hard to stay open, and we ought to work just as hard to keep them open. So look for that. There are going to be some great opportunities for good dining experiences. All right, so we'll move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. This item contains two separate points that we're going to break out. The first will be consideration of an emergency ordinance to enforce state guidance on face coverings by administrative citation. The second will be consideration of an emergency ordinance to implement a one-person, one-seat rule for establishments with a walk-up bar. So on the first item, which is consideration of an ordinance to enforce state guidance on face coverings by administrative citation, if you'd like to bring this back, please raise your hand. This is consideration of an emergency ordinance to enforce state guidance on face coverings by administrative citation. So if you would like to bring this back for discussion under A1, please raise your hand.
That's Mayor Protem Avery and Councilmembers Brenner and Hurdman.
Okay. Then the next is consideration of an emergency ordinance to implement a one-person, one-seat rule for establishments with a walk-up bar. If you'd like to see this, please raise your hand.
That'd be Mayor Protem Avery and Councilmembers Dixon, Brenner, and Hurdman.
Okay. All right, we'll move forward into public comments, or I'm sorry, we'll move forward into consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. On consent calendar, do we have any recusals or removals? Mr. Hurdman. Mr. Duffield. Ms. Brenner.
None.
Ms. Dixon.
Number five.
Removal of number five? Okay. Mr. Muldoon.
My apologies, I misspoke earlier. The conflicts I have that I stated prior were nine, 10, and 12, and that was based on prior employment in telecommunications industry.
Okay. Mr. Avery.
None.
And I have none. Mr. Avery, would you like to make the motion?
I would, Mr. Mayor. I move the balance of consent calendar items 1 through 14, with the exceptions of items 5, pulled by Councilmember Dixon, with recusals from Councilmember Muldoon on items 9, 10, and 12. And we have amendments on item 1, the minutes.
All right. We'll go out to, oh, I'm sorry, do we have a second on that?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Muldoon. All right, we'll go out to public comment on this. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll, okay, we'll go to the phones.
[inaudible 00:15:51].
Hi, go ahead.
[inaudible 00:15:52]. [inaudible 00:15:53]. Quote, "When utilizing the term 'functionally equivalent services,' the conferees are referring only to personal wireless service facilities. The conferees also intend that the phrase 'functionally equivalent services' will provide locality-specific to treat facilities that create different visual, aesthetic, or safety concerns differently to the extent permitted under general applicable zoning requirements." For example, "The conferees do not intend that if a state or local government grants permit a commercial district, it must also grant a permit for the competitor's 6-foot tower in a residential district." This is about public safety.
Which item are you speaking to?
[inaudible 00:16:01].
Hi, which item are you speaking to?
[inaudible 00:16:02].
Is this a recording? Hi, what item are you speaking to?
I think that was a recording.
Okay, we're going to, we'll cut that one off. Okay, all right, we'll bring it back up. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Oh, I have to, do I raise my?
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance number 2020-18, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach amending a development agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Hoag Memorial Hospital Presbyterian. And ordinance number 2020-19, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach adopting code amendment number CA 2019-001 to amend Title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, correcting and clarifying provisions related to overlays and public hearing notice requirements. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay. All right, item number five has been pulled by Ms. Dixon. Ms. Dixon, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Gives me great pleasure to have initiated, with full support of our council members, I presume, when we vote on this, a resolution to support the Newport Beach Police Department. So if you'll indulge me, I'd like to make a few comments and state the resolution. Whereas the existence of law and order in any community most often results from a collaboration between the residents of that community and its law enforcement officers. And recent national events have brought attention to the profession of law enforcement and the men and women who dedicate themselves and their families to this profession. And the right to freedom of speech and peaceful protest must be protected, and we, as a community, have witnessed how some national events have given way to violence, destruction of property, and an abandonment of community values and collaboration. And the Newport Beach Police Department employs a workforce comprised of highly trained and educated individuals who are committed to excellence and have the highest standards of ethics. Whereas on June 3rd, 2020, the Newport Beach Police Department was faced with five separate protests at five separate locations in the City of Newport Beach totaling approximately 2,500 protesters. To conclude the 12-hour day, whereas to conclude the 12-hour day without any major incidents, property damage, or injuries to officers or protesters is a demonstration of the Newport Beach Police Department's exceptional professionalism, preparation, and planning. And whereas the fashion in which the Newport Beach Police Department maintained order and provided a safe environment for all participants is a testament to their commitment to community's needs, desires, and values, and further embodies how the Newport Beach Police Department continues to be an extension and reflection of those they so proudly serve. Now therefore, the City of Newport Beach resolves and does hereby express support for the members of the Newport Beach Police Department in their efforts to connect with the community and create a safe environment for all people who reside, work, or play in the City of Newport Beach. And the recitals that we will be voting on shortly will memorialize that, and the resolutions of the City of Newport Beach. I want to say how important it is, as I've just read, for the city to say this, and for all of us know that how important our Police Department is. I mean, we've all heard comments that residents will say, "This is the only city they know where they could wave and get a wave back from our police." Our community knows our police officers, they know them by name, and they feel comfortable enough to call the police chief at all hours of the day or night, or text him, because they know they could reach someone in the Police Department and record their concerns. I want to thank Chief Lewis for your leadership and commitment to keeping our city safe and to recognize the women and men in blue, I always never know if it's blue or black, but I think they're navy blue, who serve our city and our 87,000 residents and 10 million visitors with world-class service. Year-to-date, and the mayor cited some data a few months ago when we were discussing COVID, but just to give some data, year-to-date, computer-aided dispatch calls, calls that come into dispatch and the non-emergency number, 64,644 people are calling our Police Department in our little city. 911 calls, 28,602. These are world-setting response times. Priority one response time, 2 minutes and 51 seconds. That is incredible. I'd like to see what New York is doing these days. The 911 calls are, 99.6% of our 911 calls are answered within 15 seconds, and 98.44% are answered within 10 seconds. I think that is a national record. And as I said in the resolution, we are all aware of the civil unrest and more taking place in cities every day across our country. Our Police Department exemplifies the very best in community policing. So I want to thank the officers who are here, and to your colleagues, thank you for your service. And that of the 148 sworn officers, 84 non-sworn officers, 27 part-time personnel, and 53 volunteers who all make up our very fine, the finest of the fine of our Newport Beach Police Department. Thank you for keeping our community peaceful and safe. Thank you.
I would just like to add that your service has been so much more far-reaching than just the protests, that we have had mass baptisms on our beaches, we've had bioluminescence events that were advertised on social media, where people were crowding our beaches at midnight. We've had so many different things going on during just the last few months, and you always rise to the occasion and you treat everyone with such respect and dignity. And we really appreciate that. And when the defund police movement started, it was such a pleasure for us to be able to answer those emails that we got, generally from people far away, saying, "We don't need to defund..." saying, "We don't need to defund our police because our police do so much more than just deal with criminals." They do so many far-reaching events into the community that benefits everyone. It's not just about policing, it truly is community policing. And you guys set the bar for that, and we are so proud of you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Dixon for this considerate item. Obviously, we all support it, we all support you. And it's great to have you be the representatives of the city because someone's more likely to come in contact with you, even if they're not breaking the law than they are any of the seven of us here. I think, I know Councilman Brenner was at one of the events at least. I made it to either three or four of the events that day. And I don't know, the stress that you could feel from the residents and those who were assembling was so intense. And the logistics and the calm, professional demeanor and the approachable philosophy that the chief and his team took, really, I think elevated Newport Beach. Showed that we're a city of law and order, but we're also a city of compassion, and we respect civil liberties and law, and as I said, public safety. So I just want to thank you. It probably was the most stressful day since I've been elected a city council. I know people asking for curfew to be called, and people were generally afraid, but I imagine it was even more so for you, ladies and gentlemen, in the back and everyone else you serve with. So thank you so much for all you do and for meeting the task. Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Yeah. I concur with all the remarks, of course. And I'd just like to say I'm so continually impressed with professionalism. And I'm trying to think of what it was, and I think it's the intelligence, the social intelligence, the human intelligence in dealing with people and de-escalating and stepping up when it's required, but knowing when to just kind of hold back. And I just think that's something that is so lacking in so many places today. And I know where it comes from. It comes from great hiring and great training. You start out with great people, and you train, 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 and you keep working at it to get better. And there's always a challenge around the corner that needs to be met every day for you guys. And I'm just honored to be on council with a police force like this. Thank you.
Thank you. And then quickly wrapping up, I'll just say, one of the first major events that got canceled this year was the Police Appreciation Breakfast. And I missed giving that speech. I actually had it written and was genuinely excited to give it because of all the things that we've been saying right now. Little did we know how much our community would show their support and appreciation over the last certainly few months. Whether it was a half-page, then a full-page ad in the daily pilot, whether it's signs that have gone up across the city thanking you for your service, whether it's all the different ways people have thanked you as they've driven past. So this is a small thank you on behalf of the city council for all of the work that you've provided. But you know darn well that there are thousands of voices saying thank you out in the community too. So with that, we'll go out to public comment first, and then we'll bring this back for a vote. Do we have any public comment in the community room on this? All right, seeing none, do we have any? Nope. All right, since you asked for it, Ms. Dixon, I'll go ahead.
I'll make the motion to support the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Muldoon. Any discussion? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on into public comments on non-agenda items. We'll start first in the community room.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. First off, wow. This epidemic is still pretty crazy, huh? I mean, seriously, what is going on? Anyways, you guys look good. Tans are popping. Nice. Yeah, so back when Corona first struck and got Tom Hanks, things were tough. But things got even tougher when the city committed what can only be described as an act of war against the youth. And I think you know what I'm talking about. You guys dumped sand in the skate park. It hurt. Almost as bad as when Mia Salinski dumped sand in my heart in ninth grade when she decided to go to Europe for two weeks. And I'm all for safety, but this is a bit rash. And let me be clear, I'm cool not shredding crepe during lockdown. I'm cool not working, I don't even have a job. But I am not cool with sand in the skate parks.
We don't have a skate park.
Skaters have been bullied for centuries, it's unfair. Can you imagine the city dumping sand on the tennis courts at Pelican Hill? No. Skaters don't even have an emoji. I mean, you got one for surfers, salsa dancers, even skiers. And thankfully, the skate parks open again, and we are psyched. But I can still hear the sound of sand crunching in my bearings. Skateboarders need restitute from the city so that we can ollie our way out of this conundrum. And there's no better person to propose this olive branch than my dog JT.
Yeah. Just to quickly remind you, the same thing during study session.
What up, council?
Hang on.
I don't have an actual olive branch, that was a metaphor for peace.
Hang on.
I'm a roller blader. It's rare to see a skater and blader united for the same cause, but Chad and I discovered long ago that we are--
Okay. So we're gonna come back to the public comment. But I just want to say real quickly before, as we said during public comment in the study session, the City of Newport Beach does not actually have a skate park, and we did not put any sand in anything. The picture that has been shown is a different city. So with that, we'll go ahead and start that public comment again. But just for future reference, public comments, you need to wait until, you know, I actually recognize the next speaker. So on that, it's worth just noting that we do not have a skate park. We did not dump any sand in anything. So anyway, all right. We'll go to the next speaker now.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry I started too quickly. But Mayor, we still think that you can serve as an ambassador for the rider and city official community. That is why we are asking you, Mr. Mayor, to drop into the San Clemente Skate Park Bowl. It would be a huge message to riders all over that we can trust you. Don't be afraid, just dip your shoulder, commit to the drop like you commit to civil service. Ride it out, it'll be over in a few seconds. If you brick it, we'll have the same medical team there from the Jake Brown accident. And there is no more symbolic date for this to happen than September 4th, 2020, the day Tony Hawk Pro Skater 1 and 2 comes out on multiple platforms. This speech was paid for by Activision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council. On a slightly different subject, this is Jim Mosher. This comment was originally intended for the Planning Commission, but their meetings have been canceled recently, and it's equally relevant to you. You may recall that there is an application pending to build a private parking structure in the Mariners Mile area at the corner of Riverside Avenue and Avon. That proposal was approved by the Planning Commission, it was appealed to you, and then your decision was appealed to the California Coastal Commission. Throughout that process, the decision-makers hear from folks who are in favor of the project, they hear from folks who are opposed to the project. And while the matter is before the city, they also hear from the city staff, who the decision-makers, whether they're the Planning Commission or you, rely on to be neutral, unbiased advisors who are evaluating the proposal as professionals, informing you as to their professional opinion, as to how it conforms or does not conform to the city's adopted standards. What came as a surprise to me, and perhaps it should not be a surprise, since a similar thing happened to me in a matter I was involved with, when this parking structure proposal came to the Coastal Commission a couple of weeks ago for their decision as to whether it raised issues, a substantial issue with the Coastal Act or not, city staff apparently unsolicited submitted a five-page letter with attachments advocating for the applicant, asking for the appeal to be denied. It seems to me that when the matter leaves the city, it's no longer the city staff's business, and it's really hard for the public to think and see our staff as neutral, objective observers when they take a side in an issue, so clearly as they did in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? All right, do we have any calls? All right. Hi, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for the time today. I attest and affirm the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. Thank you. There was a game-changing ruling on August 12th, 2020, in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals regarding FCC 18-133. That's the FCC Order for Streamlining Small Cell Deployment. On August 12th, the Ninth Circuit judges wrote, quote, "Congress prohibited unreasonable discrimination but permitted state and local governments to differentiate in the regulation of functionally equivalent providers with very different physical infrastructure." Those would be small cells. "We therefore hold that the FCC's requirement in the small cell order that, quote, 'aesthetic regulations be no more burdensome than regulations applied to other infrastructure deployment' is contrary to the controlling statutory provision." They also continued, "We also hold that the FCC's requirement that all aesthetic regulations be, quote, 'objective,' end quote, is not adequately explained and is therefore arbitrary and capricious." This is very important. We need to unpack this. This means the City of Newport Beach, under the Cooperative Federalism Scheme that was set up by the 1996 Telecommunications Act, is a full player in local regulations over so-called small cell wireless telecommunications facilities, including the operations of these WTS. That means the effect of radiated power. Here's the problem. If you have a properly-sighted macro tower 2,500 feet away from people, with antennas 200 feet in the air, when the signal gets to a bedroom, it's enough for five bars on a cellphone. That's .002 radiation units. However, when you put a small cell 50 feet outside of someone's home and turn it on, in that bedroom is now 50,000 radiation units. Folks, that's 25 million times higher. That is a matter of public safety. You have to understand, you own this as the city council. So we have a conference report from the 1996 TCA which says specifically that the conferees do not intend if a state or local government grants a permit in a commercial district, it must also grant a permit for the competitor's 50-foot towers in a residential district. This is about public safety. You all own public safety. Neither the FCC nor the wireless industry own it. It's all yours. The congressional intent of the 1996 TCA was to not construct small cells in residential zones. Full stop. Wireless broadband by copper, coaxial, or fiber-optic cable is not a functionally equivalent service to any wireless service, either wireless telecommunications service, that means phone calls, or wireless information service. That's internet gaming or video streaming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please. Hi, go ahead.
Hi, this is Scott Carpenter, owner of I Trip Vacations in Newport Beach. We're a short-term property management company. Good afternoon, good evening, council. Thank you for your service and very proud to have seen you pass the support for the police department. I'm speaking today on the emergency ordinance on short-term rental. Now that the state has removed Orange County from the watch list and we are on a glide path of seeing businesses reopen, I'd like to see the council on the next agenda go back and review the emergency ordinance and consider lifting the moratorium on issuing new short-term rental permits as we are now getting into the shortest part of the season. And there are families that are certainly anxious to get on with doing certain things with their properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other callers? All right. Bring it back up here. So we'll go into public hearings. Start with item number 15. Ordinance number 2020-20, Non-Exclusive Commercial Solid Waste Franchises. Unless council would like a staff report, we'll forego. All right, any questions or comments? Fairly straightforward. All right, we'll go into public comments on this. Do we have any public comments on item number 15? Any calls? All right, we'll bring it back. I'm gonna move staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Avery. Any discussion on this item? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2020-20, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach granting the 2020 Non-Exclusive Franchise Agreements for commercial solid waste and vertebral materials handling services within the City of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right. Moving to item number 16. I had a couple of questions on this. So Simone, you're gonna handle this one. I had two questions. The first question was, why only wine? There's a lot of beer tasting rooms out there, too. And then the second question I had was, do we have a slide or anything showing us what a map would look like? So basically, if we got to the point where, I'd just like to see what it would look like if we had the 500 feet away from schools, which buildings in that area would actually be viable for this?
Certainly. So Simone Gerger, Community Development Director. Why wine? When we came to the council, the city council has to initiate the code change. And so we only specified just wine. We wanted to limit it as much as possible, hence we didn't include anything else. And so we do have that PowerPoint, if we can go ahead and put that up. And I think we do have that slide here. We could just go ahead and launch that. All right. I got the industrial zone here, it's circled, and I still have some more slides. So right there is showing the 500-foot separation from the school in the industrial zone, and let me go to the next slide here. And that slide there, those colored buildings show buildings that are not within the 500-foot. And you could see that blue dashed line, that's the border between the City of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. So again, we can't affect Costa Mesa. So those red buildings are not within the 500-foot radius from the school property line. You see in the middle of the page, that star there, that is the OC Winery location, just for, as a reference.
So when we're looking, when we're looking at the dashed line, just to be clear, there aren't any schools on the Costa Mesa side that would be within 500 feet? I don't think so, but I just--
I'm not familiar, let me-- No, we don't, there's no knowledge of a school.
Okay. All right. Is it, would it be possible, if I wanted to offer friendly amendment into this to include a beer tasting as well? Not a brewery, to be clear, like not brewing beer onsite, same thing. Would that be feasible tonight, or is that something that we would have to do a different code initiation on?
I think we can go ahead and do that this evening.
Okay. Well, it's--
Nope? You can't add it? Okay.
So the city attorney says, nope.
No.
Not even close.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we can bring it back.
All right. Okay. It's worth asking. All right, Ms. Dixon.
Right. So long as you put this illustration up, is that these are the potential facilities or physical structures that if wanted to have a wine tasting facility, they could?
Yes.
Okay. Question number two. Has this ever been considered holistically in a general plan process?
No, not in a general plan process. The council has considered alcohol use in the industrial zone on two different occasions, and the council wasn't supportive in the past. Through a zoning code amendment, I'm sorry.
And unanimously rejected?
Correct. Last time we came back was, I think, two years ago, when the council rejected that.
Has there been any, similar to a general plan process, any-- Has there been any, similar to a general plan process, any into this community, community discussions, similar to how, what we heard from the community two years ago when we opposed this same proposal? Has there been any discussion in the community of what they wanted to see in this area, or is this being, yes or no?
No.
Is this matter being brought forward by a single entity?
The OC Winery is out of compliance. They're operating as a retail establishment, and they're supposed to be operating as a manufacturing establishment.
How long have they been out of compliance?
They've been out of compliance quite a long time. We've known about it for about maybe a year and a half.
Why have we allowed it to be out of compliance?
Well, we have suspended enforcement action pending this code change. If the council is supportive of this code change, then they would submit an application for a CUP and go through the entitlement process. If the council is not supportive of this item this evening, then we would continue with our enforcement and ensure that they either evict the premises or change their use back to manufacturing.
When I visited this site at the time, two years ago, or maybe it was 18 months ago, it wasn't that long ago, when we were considering virtually the same issue, I visited the site and understood that, and they understood, the tenant, it's, he's not the property owner, but the tenant understood that he was operating without a permit and that he was hoping for the favorable disposition of the city, and that's why I went there, too. And I recommended that we be lenient with him as far as enforcement while they are searching for another location. Did they search for another location?
You know, I've gotten mixed messages that they've, I have heard that they may have found a location in Costa Mesa. I believe that they could not find a location in Newport Beach because it's just too expensive to rent square footage. So my understanding is that they had found a location in Costa Mesa, and they're waiting on tonight's action.
All right. So with the Planning Commission's decision a few weeks ago on this item, staff had recommended, if I understand this correctly, 500-foot separation between potential businesses offering similar wine tasting offerings, and they removed the 500-foot. So what is the consequence of that? So that all these buildings could now become in the industrial zone, that zone for industrial commercial uses could be a wine or potentially beer locations. Has this been studied in terms of the impact on the nearby area, or is this what we want to do in our general plan and the overall visioning process for the city? Has this come out? When we started to do the general plan update a few months ago, we had to suspend because of the housing element issue and COVID. Did this come out where there's a demand in the community to have wine and beer tasting in this part of the city?
You know, we've received some public comment letters for this evening, but as far as through the general plan process, this item was not discussed, and no thoughts about allowing alcohol service in this industrial zone has been provided from the community. We just had public comments in support of this item for tonight.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll just continue to speak, though, but thank you for answering those questions. I will be listening to the public comment. I've read the letters. I will just say upfront, this is an easy decision for me personally. While I think a wine tasting facility on the peninsula, where it's properly zoned, would be an ideal addition, and I would commend it and support it, I will not tonight be supporting putting this, the effect, the impact, the slippery slope impact that one, this one site will have potentially in this entire area without having studied this, to study the potential impact. Our action alone will affect the property values of all these affected areas overnight. Suddenly, they have the potential to be zoned for wine and beer, or, and mark my words, since this is public record, I bet within a year after, it will be beer, and then it will be a full ABC license request that is going to come forward. So my caution is, before we go headlong into making significant changes to an area of our city that has not been studied for 15 years, since the last general plan, at which time this city was designated industrial usage, and every, virtually every physical structure here is a school or an industrial use, that we are single-handedly, unilaterally, acting like the general plan update committee and deciding that this is suddenly now a beer and wine location. I think it's a slippery slope. I think it's the wrong thing to do in this location until it is studied, and the community has an opportunity to react to this and to have a point of view. I also know that Costa Mesa has bars just a block away, and I could just see this being an intense area. Let me just ask you one more question, since you're still standing. Since we could look at the prospect for intensification of alcohol use, has the police department weighed in on a recommendation on this?
No, this is just a land use decision by the council.
So this has broader implications than a single entity, and I, my recommendation tonight would be that we defer this until the general plan update committee considers this use. I think this area has potential for a lot of different things, but tonight is not the night to do a piecemeal amendment to our general plan and affect all the property values in this area without fully studying this. So, thank you, Mr. Gerjes. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Avery?
Yeah, this is in my district, and so I've been out there, and I gotta say, it's disappointing on how it kind of got started with someone, you know, and I get, I'm all support for business, but there's also kind of playing by the rules. And so, you know, it kind of morphed as it went along, and pretty soon, it's, they've got, they're serving some food, and they're serving drinks, and, you know, it's sort of a bad start. And I think maybe we led them along a little bit through this process, kind of trying to figure out what we're going to do with this, because, again, we're a city that wants to help small business, and we get where they're coming from. But this is a tough way to start. These kinds of zones have been really successful in certain cities, I think Anaheim. I know Santa Barbara has what they call the funk zone, and it's sort of just took an area that was sort of blighted and just sort of brought it around and brought in some really cool restaurants and breweries and wine tasting, not beer tasting, rather. And it's all good, and this might be the right spot for it, but it, at the very, we really need to look at it, and I don't even know in terms of zoning, you know, if you're a property owner and it's going to get rezoned, would you rather have it rezoned, you know, five-story residential, like so much of it? And so I don't know if I'd be happy if I was a property owner and it got rezoned in this fashion, so it, you know, there's a lot to do here. So, you know, I know the general plan is, for these guys, a long way off. I don't know what we do here, but I absolutely think this should be studied and figured out before we sort of give the green light to all these pink squares to light off as beer and wine tasting rooms. And we need to, you know, we carefully manage the growth to the extent that we can in this city, put a lot of effort into it, so to let this just roll out without study is, I think, problematic. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Simone, so what I think I'm hearing is, there was no outreach to the other businesses around here or to any of the lofts and the homes in this general area, asking for any feedback from any of them about this?
No, we don't do, we didn't do the outreach on this.
So, I mean, I'm torn on this because I actually love the idea of having eating and drinking establishments that you can walk to from your home and walk back home and not get in the car. My district's kind of a poster child for that, and it works really well, but this seems to be a piecemeal approach, and I'm really opposed to us rewarding people who break our laws and defy our ordinances. Like, should we be encouraging that? Isn't that just something where we're asking for more people to do that in the future if we reward them for not abiding by the rules that everybody else is abiding by? So, I would like to see this studied as far as how it could be sort of revitalized and maybe made a nice area that the residents in the surrounding area could walk to, but I don't think we can do it tonight in just this, this one vote, and, but I would like to, do we have to wait all the way until the general plan is revised, or is there another process that we could go through that would study this in more detail and really do it the right way?
Right now, the only process I do have is through the general plan update process. It's just, it's a matter of resources. If council wants us to make this a priority, then we'll come back for direction to make this a priority.
That just, that was just a general question. I'm not giving you, certainly not my direction. It would be Brad that would have to decide if that was something we wanted to move to the front of the line or to make that case, but I just think that this is not the right way for us to do it.
All right, Mr. Muldoon.
So sad to see this conversation go that the wine glass is half-empty rather than half-full. This is an excellent thing for this neighborhood. If we don't increase the property values, which this would do because we're adding additional use to these properties, we can see that this one day will become more and more housing, which I support additional housing. Sacramento gives it to us, but we don't need everything to be more housing. This particular instance, we're talking about saving a business. As governments up and down the state and their own governor are constantly shutting down businesses selfishly, thinking nothing of free people and their ability to operate a business, I think we have an opportunity to save a business. I hope they get that Costa Mesa property if they can make this work, and I don't know what those employees will do between the time when they do tenant improvements and get their liquor license there and get opening, but, you know, I was elected not to impede businesses and certainly not to be a micromanager of free enterprise. I think that people are looking at this very myopically. From a big-picture standpoint, I agree with the mayor. We should have beer here as well. I know other people have reached out, and they want to do something like this. It likely would be done in the general plan, and they understand that. But, you know, we don't have to have, we don't have to control every use so that the only inevitable option is more housing. We can allow these people who are businesspeople flexibility and to have other uses that this case would operate outside of school hours, outside of the school zone, and with the support of the community. I received, I think, almost 30 emails supporting this. I received not a single email or complaint against this. I really hope we don't shut down this business tonight.
All right, any discussion, more discussion before we go to public comment? Okay. Thank you, Simone. We'll go out to public comment now, so we'll start in the community room. Any public comment on this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Philip Greer. I'm an attorney for the applicant. I hope I get a couple extra minutes because there's been a lot of information that's been thrown out that is just incorrect. First, we are not asking for beer and wine. We are simply asking for a continuation of a wine tasting operation that has been in effect for approximately 10 years. Second, there has been no breach on our part. We started out with a small, two-unit facility over there, and it was grandfathered, and essentially, the zoning changed, and we had no idea, nobody came out. The city finally came out, and they worked out an agreement with us that we could get in compliance. We then realized that by expanding, we would need to have additional compliance, and we have been working with the city. Currently, the business is closed because we are not in compliance until we either get these zonings, and then we get a CUP. So, again, this is also not granting use of this property for this purpose. It is simply allowing for a zoning change to allow for any entity, not just Orange Coast Winery, but for any entity to come in and file for a CUP and go through that process, which also involves community research, community outreach, and all the other things that are necessary before that continual, conditional use permit is used and issued and viable. There is no current location in Costa Mesa. There is no significant change in what is going on over there. The zoning would allow for the property to be used from approximately 5:00 PM till 11:00 PM on weekdays and noon till 11:00 PM on weekends. It will not be impacting either businesses over there or any, any schools or any families or any operations. Whatever outreach the city did, they did in going through the zoning process. We have also done community outreach, and as the, as Mr. Muldoon said, over 30 people have written letters in support of this project. Two of those letters came from Mario Mikova and Jim Walker, two very well-known, very significant restaurateurs in the community who believe that this is a viable project and that the zoning should be, be allowed. We are not serving food, and we are not serving drinks. There is no kitchen. There is no kitchen allowed. If you look at the regulations, the zoning, these, okay, I'm getting feedback now, so, anyway, if you look at the regulations, the regulations require no food service. There's no kitchen there. We are not selling food. We don't want to sell beer. We don't want to sell hard liquor. We don't want to sell anything other than some retail wine from a specific winery. You have to understand, what the ABC has said is that the relationship we have with the single winery in Temecula allows us through the ABC to provide samples and then retail, and that's all we're doing. Nobody is showing different kinds of wine. Nobody's showing different kinds of beer. It's not a beer house. None of that. We're essentially looking at a modification of a definition. There is already allowed commercial activity there. There is already allowed food and drink there. We are simply expanding that to include wine. We, again, we are not expanding it to include anything else. Parking is more than adequate. If we wait on this project for three years, as Mr. Muldoon says, these people will be out of business. And I don't think in this time, when restaurants are hurting, when people are looking for entertainment, when the city is looking for revenues, to put a business that wants to come in, wants to work with the community, has demonstrated that. The planning people have been out. We've walked the project site with them. We've interacted with them and come up with what we believe is a reasonable zoning parameter for this thing to happen. And finally, as Mr. Muldoon again stated, this will enhance the growth of that area. It will provide an alternative. It will provide an increase in property values, and will be very beneficial for the city. As the representative, I'm here if you have any questions. Otherwise, I hope you will consider this, and I hope you will vote for it.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the next speaker.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. I agree with Councilmember Dixon, and I actually do not understand how this got through the Planning Commission. To be clear, the matter before you tonight is not a request for a general plan amendment, no matter how that general plan amendment is done, but it's for a zoning change. And the fact that the city initiated a general plan update last year indicates the city still feels that our general plan means something. The general plan is a vision for our city. It's not like we don't have one. We have a very clear general plan currently. This area was carefully studied. It was given this designation of general industrial expressly to reserve an area of our city for industrial and light commercial uses and what are called ancillary, commercial and office uses that support those manufacturing and research operations. There is narrative explaining that in our general plan, if you bother to read it. There are goals and policies supporting that. One of them, one of those goals, goal Land Use Element 6.7, specifically says that this area with the IG designation is intended as a place to provide opportunities for needed uses that cannot be accommodated elsewhere in Newport Beach. We want the industrial manufacturing to be concentrated here. That is our vision. It's for uses that cannot be accommodated elsewhere. A wine tasting operation clearly could be accommodated in many other areas of the city, and as I tried to explain to the Planning Commission, and will try to explain to you, if you went forward with this zoning change, which is totally incompatible with the... if you went forward with this zoning change, which is totally incompatible with the current general plan and therefore not even possible, but if you did it, specifying that this is the zone where wine tasting facilities should be means they cannot then be legally approved anywhere else in the city, totally contrary common sense or to our general plan. I just simply cannot see how this could be approved at the present time without changing the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I can't, is the speaker working? Okay. It is, yep. I wanted to say that I'm truly in support of having a wine tasting facility there. I am a business operator in the area. I'm off of Monrovia Avenue. We are in the, the company's toes on the nose. We're right in mid, right next to Coastline Community College there. But what I want to speak to primarily is that this area is really unique. It's an opportunity to do something special. It's a great place to work, a great place to live. There's coffee shops, there's schools, there's businesses that have been there a long time. We've been there twenty years, and I've seen it change, and I've seen it change for the better. And I like what I hear from, you know, operations coming in. I've seen what, you know, Common Room Roasters is doing. I've seen what the other coffee shop is doing. I've seen what, you know, having Pacifica come in there and the vibrancy that they've put in, the high school there, and it's a neat area. It's a unique fabrication of like what Newport Beach can be and what other cities can do and what they've done in coastal areas. And it's like, I think it'd be a real shame not to like open our eyes to what cities are seeing out there and what they're having success and what the population and the community really wants. I can tell you that I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. I've done my own outreach, and they're all in favor of it. And, you know, I can tell you, this is an important thing for us to change and adjust to what the community wants. People are walking to eat. They're walking to have their coffee. They're, you know, they're jumping on their bikes and they're going to the beach. I mean, this is truly something, an opportunity that we need to jump on and to put businesses, you know, over another hurdle in trying to operate there. It's not something that we need today. We need to be a business environment up there, and this is truly a unique area that can thrive under this type of thing. And it's like, you know, like I said, I've been there twenty years, and it's like, you know, I've got a sixteen-year-old daughter that, you know, who knows what she'll want to do with our building in ten years or five years or, you know, when, you know, there's other businesses come in or when next generations come in. I can tell you, we need to address these issues. We can't be put off years and years. It's really hard on businesses, and everyone knows what businesses are going through now. My God, let's not make it harder on people. It's like, it's hard to pay, it's hard to pay our bills. We're working our tails off, and I guarantee every other business is having their challenges too. And I highly encourage you guys to open the thought process and advance this area into something new and unique and what's, you know, we've seen areas in San Diego do really exciting things. You know, I've seen what's gone up in Paso Robos. I've seen what's going on in certain parts of, you know, other neat coastal communities. And it's like Newport Beach is a innovative, like beautiful place to live and work, and let's, let's, let's move forward. Like, let's not be stuck in an industrial use our entire time, and let's have this be vibrant, something that the community's excited about and can participate in.
Great, yep.
You know, there's another business, I believe they're in Costa Mesa, but called Trenta, and it's a restaurant over there that's really neat.
Can you hear me? Yeah, we're, so you just reached your three minutes. If you could just finish up real quick, please.
Okay. But anyhow, I'm here to support them, and please consider this. I think it'd be something the community would be really, would really appreciate. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the next speaker, please. All right, looks like we don't have any, do we have any calls? All right, we'll take the calls. Hi, go ahead. Hi, so you want to mute what you're listening to and then go ahead and start speaking?
Yes. Tell me when you're ready.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Michael Bocky. I am a property owner in Newport Beach in the zone. I actually live within a half mile from here. I have studied this ever since I saw it on the agenda. My property value, my property value is what is at stake, and I think that a walkable route from my home to a wine tasting room would be a good thing for my neighborhood. I fully support this. I actually go jogging through this area five days a week. I know this area very well. I have coffee in this very area at Daydream Coffee quite often. I even get my car detailed here. I used to, I have used one of the powder coating businesses right in the same parking lot, but in the past, this was a bad area. This used to be a place where homeless people gathered and camped. It was horrible. It was a eyesore in Newport Beach, but there was a big fire. There was some bad management, some homeless camp. They cleared it out, and it's changed. Since then, there have been many great small businesses there, and this would be a great addition. This is not another thing that would create more dive bars or a sudden flood of beer halls. There are no bars in Newport that are close to this, so it would not be a concentration of alcohol drinking. In fact, the closest bar is on Pecentia in Costa Mesa. Guys, this will not turn the area into an Oktoberfest. In fact, I think actually the opposite will happen. It will draw professionals and educated people who want to taste quality wine. In my opinion, Newport needs something like this, and this would be a classy thing for Newport Beach. People in Newport often go to Temecula for wine tasting, and that is business that Newport is losing. Changing the zoning in this situation would benefit the city and keep that business and that money in Newport Beach. If wine tasting rooms are allowed, I do not think this would create an invasion of wine drinking. Most of the businesses in this area are for auto mechanics. There's an interior design, there's coffee shops, and they're great businesses with great people. I am not concerned that this will affect my property value, and I support it wholeheartedly. You may not live in this area, guys, but I do, and I want to see this available. I think this would be a good thing for Newport Beach, a good thing for the area of Newport Crest and all of the homes on Monrovia Avenue, and I fully support it, and I ask you to support it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right.
Hi, this is Dorothy Kraus, and I'm calling from Newport Crest. And I can tell you that this idea to put a single-use winery tasting in a very nice, small industrial zone district is not a good idea. It is, it is a nice district. It looks good. I live here. It's got some design studios that have some other kinds of businesses that deserve the respect to continue to operate like this. Where did this idea ever come from? How did it ever make it to the Planning Commission? There was never any outreach to the communities surrounding this area, not even a courtesy outreach. It doesn't need to be revitalized. We're recognizing a business, and thank you, Diane Dixon, for your careful review and those questions you asked, because this is a business that is confronted with enforcement actions. Why are we rewarding this business? This is spot zoning. To me, it's, I don't get it, and I don't even think it needs to be studied any further. I would really appreciate it being folded in to the housing element, housing element update process, because that's where it belongs. West Newport is one of the areas that the committee is looking at with site opportunities. This is the cart before the horse. Thank you very much. Please vote no.
Thank you. Any other calls? Okay, we'll bring it back and start with Ms. Brenner.
I had a question about something that Phil Greer said about that the city granted them a conditional use permit ten years ago.
Thank you, Councilmember Brenner. There was an interim study done, and a use was granted for the manufacturing of wine. That's how they started. It was a manufacturing place, right? Industrial zone, they manufactured. So they manufactured wine. They had a little tasting room, but that, that use was allowed because it was manufacturing, and that got codified. So over the, over time, their use morphed from manufacturing. They stopped manufacturing, and it became just wine tasting, and they start serving the food, and that's where we are today.
And one further question. So it's my understanding that we've sort of postponed the general plan update process while we're doing the housing element update and the circulation plan update, those two elements of the general plan. So would this area, other than for housing, be considered during the housing element update discussions, or will this wait until we discuss the entire general plan?
So this area will, is being considered for housing opportunity. It's not being considered for a future restaurant use or alcohol use. So if it looks, if we're looking for commercial uses, then we'll have to wait through the general plan update process. But if we're using, looking for housing unit, housing opportunity sites, that'll be currently in the Housing Element Update Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you. I don't know really what my point is here, but I can bring some history to this. So I started my deal fifty years ago, about a quarter mile away. So I've watched that community grow and change and morph into other things. What the issue is, the down-and-dirty industrial manufacturing just does not exist there. I had to move, we all had to move. That used to be the number-one boatbuilding area in the United States. There's not one single boatbuilder there now. So things have changed, and what has happened is you have now what I call a pseudo-retail. So since people aren't manufacturing, you know, making, taking raw materials and turning them into a product, they're more like assembly, or they sell things. You can go buy, you can go up and down those streets, which is in total violation. You can buy things as a retail outlet, and they hide under the guise that they're wholesale. So when they're wholesale in a manufacturing area, then it, they kind of look, we all look the other way. So it's, it's going to change, and maybe it's the general plan that has to do it. I get that, all that. But I just give this group an understanding that it is not heavy industrial manufacturing because of the proximity it is to the ocean. Anything that's within bicycle riding to the surf beach, those properties have gone through the roof, and you cannot have, it's difficult to hire employees and be competitive in the world when the, all the rents and everything. It's all changed, okay? Now, how you guys want to change it officially, that's a procedure that you have to look forward to. But today, right now, this outfit that was, and to my point, I understand they started out manufacturing, which was okay, and then there was a little tasting, and then it morphed into representing another company that makes it, and they just sell it. So then, to me, you know, that's basically what the whole neighborhood is doing now. So you could make a case for every, almost every business there that sells full retail, that that's not fair. It's not zoned for that. But anyway, I give you that history. Do with it what you want. I feel like this is such an inconsequent, it's such a small wine tasting thing, and I don't think it would, in the big picture, hurt anything at all up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, so this is, well, this is not about, you know, a small business, but it is about a small business. And these guys have been, you know, entrepreneurs in a way. They haven't been following the rules all the time, but they've, I think they've been running a good operation. This could be a great area of this kind of thing. It really has, I think, potential, you know, creating a discreet zone, if you will, for this, somewhat similar to what the diagram showed. And then maybe there's residential around it, and it's got a mix of architecture firms and, you know, just unique shops and all that, just a whole nother area in the town. So there's a lot of potential here, and I think it should be explored. And so I don't know if there's a way to parse it where you can, you know, keep these guys where they are for the time being until we figure out what this should be. And if there's a way to do it without waiting for the full general plan thing, maybe we should look at that. At the same time, you know, we need to respect our process that we have. So I don't know. We should put our heads together and figure out a way to move forward and accomplish some things and not throw out, you know, our processes for planning, be able to maybe track it in a different way, and at least look at this zone that we've created just now, on paper at least, and try to figure something out and maybe create something really pretty interesting. But it's going to take time. It's going to take people coming together and discussing it, because there's a lot of different views. But I think in general, I think a lot of people are supportive of this sort of business, these kinds of businesses that Duffy described, being all together, a lot of energy, a lot of great places for people to go and be together, dynamic, small shops, not, it's small entrepreneurs just working away and doing things, artists, the whole thing, you know, it's great. So I'm, it's hard because we want to follow the general plan, and we should be using the general plan, but there's, then there's some exceptions. You know, I first thought of this as spot zoning, which it really was and is, but maybe we back away from that and we look at this, and we take a look. I think things can come in from a different direction. This is something from a different direction, and maybe I'm open to looking at something that at least take a look, maybe a quick strike look for three months or something and figure it out and see if we can work it out without losing a business. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just trying to think for a second because I haven't spoken yet, and I know I'm going to be getting to Ms. Dixon and Mr. Muldoon, who have both spoken. Just trying to decide if I want to speak right now. Maybe, I mean, do you mind? Okay, so there, maybe there are a couple of questions to ask. First off, what was originally presented to the Planning Commission was not, is not what came to us right now. So what was originally presented to us is a much smaller, it affects the same zone, but it would affect a far smaller number of buildings, therefore, you know, yeah, getting rid of a lot of the concerns that a lot of people would have in surrounding communities or surrounding areas and essentially preserving what is operationally what has been in the area for years now. So let me come back to a term that was just used. This is going to go to Mr. Harp. So one of the, one of the discussions that comes up from time to time is the concept of spot zoning. And maybe just for clarification with members of the public, what that is and whether what was originally proposed to the Planning Commission, which just, let me back up for a second. I should probably actually clarify what was originally proposed to the Planning Commission. Was originally proposed by, to the Planning Commission, that the Planning Commission struck out, was whether there would be not only 500 feet of separation from any schools, but 500 feet of separation from any particular business that's operating a tasting room. And so that would obviously limit the number in this area significantly, but, you know, so I'm trying to figure out, when that was presented to the Planning Commission, was that spot zoning?
So in general, spot zoning is when you either give a specific benefit or impose a restriction on a very small parcel of land. So when it was initially presented to the Planning Commission, it was much closer to what spot zoning is. When you're giving a benefit to a small parcel of land, you can still spot zone, but you have to show that there's a public benefit in order to move forward with that. But what's presented now, tonight, and the changes the Planning Commission made, definitely open it up so you're not dealing with one small parcel of land, so spot zoning wouldn't be applicable to what's wouldn't be applicable to what's before you this evening.
Well, what about, though, let's, what if, what if the, what if the preference at the dais right now was to ease into this, in, in a way where you are looking at what was originally presented to the Planning Commission in a way that, you know, approaches this, you know, so that, so that we have, we, it's not quite maintaining status quo, but it's fairly close in terms of the operational area, so that as we move forward with this, we have a decent sense of it is that spot zoning.
So, if you're dealing with what was originally presented to the Planning Commission, I'd feel a lot better about a decision that you made if you found that there was some public benefit involved with doing that spot zoning.
And in the context of, so the answer you're, you're saying is, it's awfully close, and, and so if we were going to do that, we'd have to be discussing the public benefit that is not currently in the, at least not currently in the staff report, discussed that way.
That's right.
Yeah, we can talk about it now. Simone, why don't you come up for a second? So, in the context of discussions on something like this, when you went to the Planning Commission, or at least when this was originally presented and recommended to the Planning Commission, was there a discussion about a public benefit to the particular parcel discussed?
No, from a staff standpoint, we didn't look at it as a spot zone. And if, Mr. Mayor, if you mind, I have a slide that would show how many other parcels would be affected.
Okay.
If we incorporate that 500 foot around each use, if you'd like to see that.
I, I would, yeah.
Could you go ahead and put the PowerPoint? So, there, there was no public benefit that was looked at? Let me see if here, if I can. So, assuming the OC Winery is the applicant, and they would process a CUP, and if we implement what the original plan was, was that 500 foot separation, those two parcels on the far right would be allowed to, one of them would be allowed to obtain or submit an application for a CUP for the similar use. Because of that, we didn't think this was, from a staff standpoint, we didn't think that this was spot zoning. Mr. Harper, your city attorney, said, you know, it's, it's right on the border there. So, hence, because there was another allowed, another property that could benefit from this proposal, we didn't look for a finding for public benefit.
Okay. Well, my, my general sense on this one is that I, I, and this is a hard one. I don't usually say that. I think this is a hard one. I think, I think where we, I think where we probably need to get to is, I think we ought to send it back to Planning Commission. I think we ought to have them take another look at this exact, this issue right here of the 500-500, so 500 from a school, 500 from the, 500 from the school, 500 from the, another use. I think they ought to analyze it from the perspective of a spot zone, and they ought to analyze it from the public benefit side of things, and make a recommendation on that front. And I think they ought to do it soon. I don't, I'm not asking for this to, this is not need to be a full-blown, huge update. You know, they don't need to do an economic analysis or anything along those lines. I would recommend at least, you know, just providing a little bit of notice into some of the communities, at least reach out to some of the HOAs in the area. I know they've got, you know, we've got HOAs in the area. It's probably worth just reaching out to some of them and making sure that they are aware of this discussion. And then I also think we ought to reach out to Carden Hall and Pacifica and just make sure that they don't have any concerns. I doubt it, but it's probably worth just making sure that they don't. But I do think this is worthy of an, of a, of a, of a more robust discussion. I, I recognize the concerns when it comes to changing the character of the community, changing the character of a, of an area that I'm hearing tonight from my colleagues. And at the same time, recognizing that operationally, that's, we, if we, if we did this, if we approved this, we really wouldn't be changing the character of that, that area at all, which has been operating like this for years now. And you haven't heard any objections, at least I haven't, from any of the business owners in the community, or nor residents. I recognize that they're not currently, or at least it sounds like, I won't pass judgment, it sounds like they're not currently in compliance with, with our zoning code. And maybe that's, maybe that's one of those times where we, we just take into account the, you know, the years of operation without, without, you know, outside complaints. So, in this, in this case, I'd rather, I'd feel more comfortable having the Planning Commission study this exact issue and make a recommendation on public benefit. If they can't come up with a public benefit, then that's where we are. But if that's, if we find ourselves in a position of being able to work within what we've already seen working in the area, and then have a more robust discussion on what this area ought to look like in the future, then that, that seems like we're kind of at least finding a middle ground that, that, it, it takes more time, but at least we're finding a middle ground, I think, that, that where we can get to. Anyway, all right, Ms. Dixon.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. That's one approach. I have a different point of view. I, I think the Planning Commission will have, they, any Planning Commission has difficulty establishing policy, they're, they're just interpreting the rules of the game, and so they're being asked to make new rules. And just as Dorothy Kraus or Jim Mosher said, we haven't, I mean, the, the council member representing this district has never even had a community meeting on this subject, and here we have heard from 30 people who think we need a zoning change. I, I just think that that's, we're the cart's before the horse, or the tail's wagging the dog, use whatever metaphor you want. This is just so contrary to how Newport Beach functions, whether it's a controversial subject or not. In my minds, I, I could see this area exactly what we're envisioning. I think all of us could think this could really be a great SoHo-type part of our city, and that would be fabulous. But let's do it right. Let's go through a process, involve the business owners, not just 30, there are more, I've got a map in my folder here, there are probably 200 business owners in this part of the city. So, we've heard from 30 of them, and great, they're invested in the community. I want it to be a thriving part, we all want it to be a successful, thriving part. I mean, our general plan identified it as marine services, because the general plan moved it all off the peninsula up to the industrial zone, and now there are no marine services up there. So, there is so much potential to really make this area special, and to get ahead of ourselves for one establishment is, in my opinion, the wrong way to go. I do not think it should go to a Planning Commission, I think it should be community-driven, and the final plan, or a plan, ultimately needs to be heard by the Planning Commission. But I, I don't think the Planning Commission, they can maybe adjudicate on this one area and the public benefit, but it's a broader engagement. If we were not in the middle of, or hopefully we're at the end of this pandemic crisis the way we are living, but because of the housing crisis and the demands placed on planning and community development, the resource issue is significant. Otherwise, I would say, let's pull this out of the general plan process, and I don't know which element this is, industrial uses, I guess, and, and have a, have a committee, an ad hoc committee formed on industrial uses, and really look at this, and have all the neighboring residents and the businesses participate and engage in a, in a visioning process. That could be exciting, and the end result can truly be wonderful for this city. But to, I'll use the term loosely, spot zone for one establishment that's driving this whole discussion when there is the possibility of a richer, more benefit, more community beneficial outcome to this, instead of just singling, focusing on this one business. I kind of like, maybe what Councilmember Avery was suggesting, there may be, I always like to find, where can we find a solution, even in the short term, even though they're non-conforming. So, Mr. Jurgis, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, do you see any way possible, during this period, interim period, we're trying to figure this out in the broader sense, could they be continuing to operate legally in a non-conforming use until, for maybe one or two years to, now, they're not operating now because of the violation of the city use, it's because their business was closed.
Right.
But when businesses resume, I guess they were considered a bar if that case, but is there any way that we could allow them to, once they return to operating status, could they operate legally within the city while we figure this out?
You know, we, we don't have any tools to allow a non-conforming use, or an illegal use, to continue for one or two years. You know, the, the only, the only tools we have are maybe like a 90-day limited-term permit at, at best. You know, it is, it is an act of enforcement that we suspended for, one, for them to find a new location, and two, to see where this goes. You know, I just don't have any tools to continue to allow an illegal operation like this.
And so, one establishment is driving the need to rezone this area without any community input, not even the support of the local council member, and we're just imposing this because somebody, 30 people think it would be a great idea. That's not, is that planning in your book?
Well, we, we came to the City Council and asked the council if they wanted to initiate a, a zone change for this. So, we came to the council to ask, and so we got the direction to go ahead and initiate, and that's, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I, I don't know what's exciting about putting someone out of business. The general plan is not a sacred document, it's meant to be amended, that's what amendments are for. Those who live lives of luxury and want to squash other people's dreams or businesses will often use rules like those made up by the general plan and say, you can't have that liberty, you can't have that property right, it says here in this document, and they'll omit the most important part, that document was not meant to confine, it was meant to plan, it was meant to be amended. You know, what is sacred is feeding your family. What is sacred is having employees, being able to pay their salary. What is sacred is having the right to gather somewhere. From a business standpoint, the landlord, this, this tenant is not the landlord, the landlord's going to do what the landlord's going to do with the property. Some people want to make it housing, I'd rather not be housing, I'd rather keep a, an industrial, soon-to-be-retail feel. If, if you want it to be housing, and we zone it housing down the road, and that's the highest and best use for the property, I bet it's going to be housing. But I, I think the calls to buy more time and, you know, to have things overplanned are so disingenuous, I, I can't believe it. It wouldn't be approved on the peninsula, people would fight on the peninsula. This is about putting a business out of business because someone doesn't like the way it got there. It's an operating business, it morphed into what other neighbors are generally accepting as, as their reality, which is retail, because as Mr. Duffield explained, times are changing. And, you know, I think it's really unfair to hide behind bureaucracy and, and general plans, general plans are not meant to be more important to people. And I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the item. I understand the mayor's point as well, and I'm open to that, but I'm wondering if we have four of us to approve the item tonight.
All right, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Duffield. All right, Ms., we'll have a debate on the motion, Ms. Brenner.
I had a question for Simone. They mentioned coffee houses and restaurants and some retail and that sort of thing in this area, are those also out of compliance?
So, my understanding is those, there are some that are mostly in Costa Mesa.
Oh, they're over the border.
Correct.
So, we don't really have...
Let me, I gotta reach out to my staff. David, do you know anything else within this area, abuses? There's a coffee roaster in that area that does some onsite tasting, so a coffee roaster with some tasting, and there's a catering facility in, in our zone. Everything else is in Costa Mesa.
And, and as far as retail goes, are there businesses there that are conducting retail operations?
You know, there may be, we haven't done a full enforcement sweep.
That's, that's what I'm concerned about, is that this area is changing so much that we may be penalizing this one business when the whole area may be transitioning to something like, I, I just really wish we could find a way to study this and do some outreach and not wait two years for a general plan. I'm, I'm going to rely on, on Brad and your recommendation on what you think we should do on this. I'm going to vote with, with you however you think we should proceed.
Okay, all right. Well, we have, would you like to explain how you're going to vote, Brad? Because apparently you carry two.
Yeah, as it is, I don't think works. We, we need to have some sort of ability to study this, get to bring the community together, out of the, and, and then work out some sort of extension for this business while we do this. You know, I don't know what's legally possible, but, but that's what, that's the only thing we can do here, is kind of bring people together and really get a sense of it, because there's a lot of people that own the dirt around there, and we haven't heard from them, how they feel. And then we have the businesses, I mean, the schools, there's a lot here. But I think we could do it, you know, just by doing some community forums and get, and come back and, and at least get a better sense of what we're looking at here.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Is there a council action that we could take to give a 120 or six-month or one-year permit extension while we go through this process?
You know, I don't have anything besides a limited-term permit that can go forward with 90 days and maybe another 90-day extension. Another avenue, maybe, and I know this is slippery slope, but maybe if the council approves tonight's item with some direction to staff to study that area, and then come back with something broader. You know, I think those are the two, two options that come to mind. Again, we have a limited-term permit, but it's very, very limited. You know, it's only for the 90-day per, only 90-day period. Again, if the council wants to go ahead and, and if they would, being so inclined, to approve tonight's item, and then direct staff to study that area, kind of in a broader, kind of a broader review, and then return at a, at some point in the future. Maybe that's another option for the council.
Well, can I ask Simone, what, Simone, what's a conditional permit?
So, a conditional use permit is a discretionary action at the Planning Commission or the zoning administrator. So, but we don't have that, we don't allow that right now, and tonight's agenda item would impose a CUP, impose a conditional use permit if the council approved the item tonight. So, it's discretionary.
So, hang on, sorry, hang on one second. So, let's talk about that limited-term permit for just a second. We're in late August, I mean, we're talking 90-day, what, what is that limited-use permit? Let's say it's 90 days. So, if you could issue a 90-day permit to allow the current operations so that they're at least in compliance for 90 days, in those 90 days, you have three Planning Commission meetings, basically, or more, but potentially three Planning Commission meetings. You could have a Planning Commission meeting, you could have community outreach, you could also have a Planning Commission meeting in November, where you have a situation where you can make this, you can bring it back. So, I mean, I, I think we do, I think they really should go back and reanalyze the, the 500-500, and make a determination on public benefit. Because you'd have a much smaller impact on surrounding community, you'd have a very, a much smaller impact in the area. You'd maintain very similar to what status quo is, and we'd also have the 90-day permit to make sure that if there are any concerns in those 90 days by anyone, they can raise them pretty quickly on an operational basis. So, if you had a situation like that, where you, they, they at least are conforming for a limited duration, you have some discussion out in public. Because you're right, this is, this is the second time it's come to council, it would be the second time it'd be at Planning Commission. There's plenty of opportunity for public comment, plenty of opportunity for public dialogue in those, in the, in the next 90 days. Then what you're, what you're doing is you are at least reaching out, making sure people have a sense of what it is, and also, you know, allowing, again, that, the business to at least operate for that ti, that time period. And if you, if you get to that point, and we have this discussion, and the public, and the, and the Planning Commission comes to a conclusion, yes or no, there's a public benefit or there's not a public benefit, we at least need them to articulate it. I mean, that's one of the things, I agree with Councilmember Dixon's point, the Planning Commission's not tasked with, with policymaking, but they are tasked with at least interpreting the code and making, making recommendations on a public benefit. They do that all the time. That's one of the things we, we get recommended to us constantly from the Planning Commission. So, they're, they're, they're well tasked with that, they just didn't do it on this one. Because what they did was they just removed it out, because they didn't want to even have the discussion about spot zoning, and they just opened it up. And I get that, I don't think it was right with respect to our Planning Commissioners, I just don't think that was a great idea, given, given the context of opening this up to a much broader issue without having those discussions out in the community. But, but, but we can send it back, that's, that's our job, like, that's our, that's our policymaking ability. So, if there's the, if there is the option... So, if there's the, if there is the option to put them in a conforming state for 90 days while we do the, some of the public outreach and have our planning commissioners take a look at that 500-500 option with a, with a, the direction of giving us a public benefit, I'd like to see that happen, frankly. Is that possible?
Yes. Yeah, I think so. And I think we could also, I gotta go back and look at the code. I think the planning commission could actually extend that 90 days for an additional 90 days. So, that, that gives me some breathing room to kind of do what the mayor has suggested.
All right, well...
High-speed holistic review process?
It's, it's not a, it's not, because, so, the question, just to be clear, was, was if, is that a high-speed holistic review process? And I think the answer's no. And the reason I say the answer, I think the answer is no, is because, yes, we are looking at modifying a zone, a zoning change in a, in a zone, and in the same way. But if we're asking them not to take the perspective of just the 500 feet from a school and allowing 23 buildings, and essentially, most of the area to be rezoned, and instead, we're looking at a 500-500 rule where we know that the applicant in this, in this, in this approach would have that center basically taken up, and you'd have two very small buildings. You are not holistically changing that area, which, in my, and you're really going to a status quo operationally, what it's been for years. So, if we're doing it in an approach like that, then what we're really saying is, we're trying to keep a status quo in the area, and we're also, at the same time, you know, acknowledging that, yeah, this is pretty, it is pretty close to spot zoning. And so, if we're, if we're getting pretty close to spot zoning, I do want it to get back to a planning commission to have a review of a public benefit. And if they can, if they can find it, great. If they can't find it, not great for the owner, but at least they've gone through the process that we expect them to be going through, and we've, we would've gone through the exact same process. Ms. Brenner.
You're ex-officio on the Housing Element Update Committee. Do you know whether they are studying this area as one of the potential areas for housing?
I think they'd have to.
And, and can we include that in our, having the planning commission look at this, but also getting some feedback from the Housing Element Update Committee about this area before we go spot zoning?
Yeah, so, so the answer is, we don't, we don't need to, and I, let me explain why. So, that, if we get to a point where we are looking at an updated housing committee, so, if we're not changing the general plan based on a modification of the zoning, in this case, then we're not actually changing, we, we're not doing any kind of designations that would have long-lasting effects beyond the zone change. And zoning goes along with your general plan. So, you know, zoning is driven by your general plan. So, if your general plan says, we need, we're, we're gonna phase in housing in this area, then your zoning needs to, your zoning needs to get changed to comply with your general plan amendment.
Are we anticipating that will happen in housing?
I don't know. I don't know. But, but, but there's no, but you, you also have the ability, and I'll just say real quickly, so, let's say, for example, that this became an area where we wanted to put more housing, high-density housing even. You have the abil, and I'm not saying we do, but I'm just saying, if we, if we're looking, and we come to the conclusion that this is an area we'd like to phase in on, on a, on that, what we can do is the exact same thing we've done every time as a city, we change our general plan, which is, you can modify the general plan to, to phase in over a number of years, that area. So, this is an area, actually, Simone, why don't you come on up for a second? So, this is a really good example, actually. So, down and near where kind of Pacifico Christian is, for example, Pacifico Christian is an area that was, is general-planned to an area that actually can switch over to housing at some point, right? So, what we've done is, we can phase in through our zone, zoning code, the same thing the general plan contemplates, because you, you wouldn't switch this automatically over to general, like, this area wouldn't be switched over as a general plan update to suddenly be housing and put all of these in non-conforming and tell them, you know, you have 90 days to turn this into housing. You'd never do that, and we wouldn't do that. But the point is that as we phase this in, we have the ability to modify. So, if we modify the zoning to allow an additional use right now, it doesn't mean for a second that we can't modify it down the road in the general plan to be housing, and that's my point. And, and so, what I'm saying, and I guess where I'm going with this, it's very long, but I needed to kind of explain the thought process. Where you're going with this is, even if, assuming we wanted to change this to housing, even if that's the recommendation that came from the Housing Element Update, and it got to us, and we said, yes, that's where we need to put more housing, a change now to allow for what's happening there does not and will not affect that decision.
Well, it'd grandfather down.
It could be, well, well, but, but, but the industrial, but it, it, let's come back for a second. If we cha, if we don't change this, and they, and there's a, and they leave, and another business comes in, they're grandfathered in too. So, it's, the, changing, changing this doesn't change our ability to modify the, the general plan down the road, is what I'm saying. Is there anything I said, Simone, that was either incorrect or needs to be better explained?
No, no. The, the general plan will set the, the path forward, and you update the zoning code as you move forward to implement. The zoning code implements your general plan, and so, as you stated, Mayor, I think you're, you're accurate, correct.
Okay, all right. Mr. Muldoon, then Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. If we were to head towards this path, Mr. Harp, and sort of have it become a little bit more resembling spot zoning, are we able to establish public benefit this evening?
Well, I definitely think there's, there could be some public benefits that you could consider, and, you know, one is, there's not any of these really type of facilities that are up there that are serving the public, and that could be a public benefit. I mean, there could be others, but there is a, it seems to be a lack of these type of visitor, or not visitor, but general service type of businesses in the area, and that could be one basis for it.
Well, whether we send it down to planning commissioner, we decide here this evening, the buck only stops with us. I think we can establish a public benefit this evening from the dais, and we take out any concerns, that the planning commission's making a policy decision. I believe those, those public benefits include what the gentleman said is a place he could walk to from his current residence to enjoy interacting with others, and a place that he can patron. I believe it includes preserving the, the value and preparing for what I think is gonna be likely the future of this, of this area, which will bring higher revenue in property taxes and in sales tax revenue, especially if we're looking at a deficit in manufacturing and other retail sales that perhaps are struggling in this area. So, I just wanted to set for the record some of the public benefit advantages to this decision, so that that's established here at our level. I still would like to call the question, Mr. Mayor, as to whether or not there are four votes approved this evening, but at the same time, I'm very open to a compromise which you, which you suggested, so...
Okay. So, before we get to Ms. Dixon, there's been a call to question, which would shut off debate, which requires a majority vote. So, I haven't done this in a while. Is there, is, do I need a second on a call to question? Mr. Harp?
You know, Mr. Mayor, straw vote, so okay too. I don't want to, you know, stumble anyone, just trying to get a consensus.
I'll tell you what, why don't we do, why don't we have one more public comment, then if you wouldn't, so, if you withdraw the, the call to question, your motion is still the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, Ms. Dixon, and then...
I just have a quick question. Is there any way we could keep them in, in business without a zoning change?
Not for the long term. For the short term, I think we have a path for that short-term period, up to maybe up to six months. And beyond that, I don't have any...
Right, okay, that's fair, because six months is better than 90 days, just so we don't, I mean, we can, we, we, I don't think we can create findings from the dais on whether there's a public benefit. We need to go through the process and have that be determined by staff and, and the planning commission. But I would be supportive. We're talking one business, keep them in business, I'm all for it. I wish, you know, there's so many open retail spaces on the peninsula, I would love them to have explored Balboa Village. That would be a tremendous asset to Balboa Village, but anyway, because there are other spa, where we wouldn't have to make any, we wouldn't have to have this discussion, it would be a matter, because it's owned for that. So, the zoning is what's problematic, and it is what's, what's kind of creating this hurdle. So, I would, whosever motion it is to incorporate, let them operate for six months, let's don't do a zoning change yet, and let's get the community involved, and eventually take it to the planning commission to determine and validate the public benefit, and then bring it back.
Okay. All right, I'll tell you what, let me, let me see if I can just kind of recap where I think we can get to, because, Aaron, this is gonna, this, this, one of the more complicated votes we've had in a while. All right, let's, let's come back for a second. So, if there's a, if there's a special permit that we can allow for 90 days, then it's potential for the planning commission to be able to extend it out, potentially, I don't know, up to six months, maybe. We can't actually direct the issuance of that special permit. Oh, we can?
No.
Oh, we can't, okay. So, what we're basically saying, let me just back up for a second. So, if, if the compromise, if we had a compromise, if there's not four votes for Mr. Muldoon's motion, and the compromise motion that I would make afterward would be something to the effect of, we would send this back to the planning commission for a review of the 500-500, which was their original motion, to be heard within 90 days unless they're unable to do so because they need more community input, at which point, we are not directing, but we are strongly suggesting to Mr. Juerges that he issue a special permit to put this business into compliance, and then request an extension if the planning commission doesn't believe it can meet within 90 days on this issue. Is all of that legal?
Yes.
Okay.
All of that, too.
All right, so, that is now Mr. Muldoon's motion. The second, who made the second? Mr. Duffield, do you accept that as a second? Okay.
What is the motion?
So, the motion on the table is now sending it back to the planning commission for a review within 90 days. If the planning commission believes that it cannot review within 90 day, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. We're sending it back to the planning commission to review the original proposal, that I'm calling the 500-500 proposal, for a review of a, a public benefit determination and recommendation to the council. The, the expectation is that they would do so within 90 days, that the recommendation from us, but not a direction, would be to grant a special permit to allow for them to conform to their current use, that if the planning commission is unable to meet or make that recommendation within 90 days due to a need for further public input, that the planning commi, or the Community Development Department bring back, or recommend, or request that the planning commission extend, per code, the, the special permit, and at no point, we don't have an, an outside date. I would suggest six months. Mr. Muldoon, would you be open to that? Okay. And with an outside extension, no more than six months? Mr. Duffield? Okay. All right, that is the motion on the table, then. Any concern?
Can we say anything about community engagement?
Yeah, I said, yes, community engagement. That, that's why if they, if the planning commission felt they needed more community engagement than 90 days would allow, that they, that Mr. Juerges would bring...
So, are they driving the community engagement, or is the...
The ex, well, the expectation is that the planning commission would be taking in community engagement, but I would also expect our Community Development Department to reach out to the communities in the area, including the schools such as Carden Hall and Pacifica.
That's what I would like. I mean, the planning commission doesn't do community engagement very well. It's the staff that drives it.
Okay, well, I would, I would, okay, then, the recommendation would also be that staff bring the, you know, participation, and if council members, including, of course, Mr. Avery, would enjoy going, we would...
Love it.
There you go. Anyway, that's not part of the motion, but, but that's the, but that's the answer to your clarification. All right, any discussion on that? Do we need to see this again at the council? Yes, it'll come back to us. So, the expectation would be that it would be a recommendation from the planning commission to us, it will come back to us. All right, go ahead, let's go ahead and vote.
The amended motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, as we head into item number 17, there are a few of us that need to declare conflicts, and I will start. I have to declare a conflict because AT&amp;T has worked with Erickson on their telecommunications polls. I previously disclosed this conflict because I represent Erickson. I am an attorney, they're one of my clients, and so, I will be declaring a conflict on this item as well.
I, I need to also because of financial interest.
And I have a conflict because of my prior employment in tele, in telecommunications. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it just the two of us? Four of us?
No, I think there's four of us. We're gonna need four. So, for the, the appeal this evening, we will hear a staff report summarizing the issues for consideration by city council, and then we will, we will hear from the applicant, who will be given 15 minutes for its presentation, and then we will hear from the appellant, who will be given 15 minutes for his presentation, and then we will hear from the public, and finally, the applicant will be given five minutes to address any issues raised before the public hearing is closed and the matter is returned to city council. Before we get into the substantive iss, substantive issues related to this appeal, it is my understanding that we are, that there are some procedural issues that we should be aware of for this hearing, Mr. Harp.
Thank you very much. Just given the limited number of council members available to consider this item, I think it's important for the city council and public to know that, under the city charter, to pass any resolution, the charter requires four affirmative votes. If four votes are not received in support of a motion, this technically results in no action being taken, and a new motion can be made. If after exhausting all the motions, there's not the required number of votes to approve any resolution, the original decision of the planning commission would be the operative decision. So, to take action tonight, you have to have all four votes. That's, that's it in sum.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Sadiba, could you please summarize the nature of the hearing and the issues result to be resolved by city council?
Good evening, Mayor Protim, Avery, and council members. Ben Sadiba, senior planner with the Planning Division. I'll give you a brief project overview of what's before you this evening, and as you said, there are other speakers, so I'm not going to go into it in extreme detail, I'm gonna keep it higher level. So, once the PowerPoint boots up here, I'll have a better outline for you. But I would also note that I have the real property administrator for the city, Lauren Whitting Whitlinger, with me, if you have any specific questions about the license agreement for that particular streetlight pole. I can go ahead and kind of start before that comes up, since we're not seeing the presentation. But basically, before you is the appeal of the, there it is, the planning commission's approval of a minor use permit and a coastal development permit to install, or to allow the installation, rather, of a small cell wireless telecommunications facility on top of a existing replaced, rather, streetlight pole. This particular location, if I may go to the next slide here. So, the location is on the corner of 30th Street and Balboa Boulevard. You can see it is shown by the red circle, that is, City Streetlight 0796. It's uniquely situated in front of a 20-foot-wide parkway that the city owns and maintains. Now, to step back and give you some background, I would just go ahead and throw into context that the city's review is largely limited by federal law. That is to say, that federal law regulates the emissions component largely, which is the Federal Communications Commission. They look at the radio frequency emissions, so, for the most part, the city cannot make a decision based on perceived health concerns or impacts. In this case, you're looking mostly at aesthetics, land use, and environmental impacts. So, as you know, council authorized a master license agreement with New Singular Wireless in February of last year to have non-exclusive access to streetlight poles for this particular purpose. On April 16th, 2020, the city zoning administrator did approve this application to allow the installation, subsequently, it was appealed by an attorney, Mark Pollock, who is representing an anonymous resident of Newport Beach, citing concerns with the master license agreement, not with the location itself, mind you. July 9th, it did get heard as a de novo hearing before the planning commission, and it was also approved. Subsequently, July 15th, it was appealed, and that's why it's here before you tonight. So, the project at hand is to remove that particular streetlight that you saw in the image, replace it in the same exact location. One key component is that the city requires the carrier, the applicant, to maintain the same luminaire height, which is the light source. So, in essence, it shouldn't look much different from a parity standpoint. When you're looking down the street, it should blend right into the streetscape. The overall height increase to the top of the antenna shroud is approximately four and a half feet, and I would just note that this is a 4G wireless installation at this time, it is not a 5G wireless installation. wireless installation. They'd have to do some upgrades to that equipment and change the design in order to make that a 5G facility. Also, the supporting equipment is completely vaulted below grade, such that you would not see that on the sidewalk. It will not hinder any public access. Again, the idea is it's taking place of an existing streetlight in the same exact location that you see there. As I said, it does require a minor use permit for a public right-of-way installation. It also requires a coastal development permit because it is located within the coastal zone. So just to give you a better idea of what it's gonna look like, here's the existing. And I did my best to superimpose the images for you, if you give it a moment here. So the block that you see, that's not gonna be part of the streetlight. That is a, showing a potential to house a temporary banner if the city allows a banner installation for the holidays or some sort of special event. That's not part of the proposal. It is just intended to show that it does have that capability. The most notable feature is, again, on top of the replaced streetlight, you will see the 12-inch in diameter antenna shroud that does house the equipment. Again, nothing in terms of wiring or anything antenna-related will be visible outside of that shroud. So as part of staff's analysis and as part of the applicant's requirements, they did look at alternative sites in the area. You'll see a number of them there. I know that the applicant will speak later. I don't know if they'll go into detail on this, but they certainly can if you so wish to hear that. But for the most part, a lot of these are on wooden utility poles, and this is in an underground assessment district, so they didn't see it as something that was feasible or that made sense for this particular project. Also, the fact that this particular location is in front of a 20-foot-wide parkway makes it unique for the area. Most of the utility poles are right up against a residential property, so it was seen as the best and least intrusive location. So although not required, the applicant did provide coverage maps as well. You can see the black dot is the proposed facility location. With the proposed facility online, you can see that there is a substantial increase in coverage for that area. Again, this is not something that was required of the applicant. They provided it to substantiate their request for this particular location. So in terms of findings, in order to recommend approval or approve a minor use permit, coastal development permit, you have to find that it is consistent with the city's local coastal program, which in this case, staff does believe it is, consistent with the zoning code and general plan, which again, staff believes it is consistent with all of the provisions in the code, as well as general plan land use policies. It is visually compatible. As I said, the luminaire height and the location in front of a landscape parkway make it such that it blends into the streetscape. And lastly, it complies with all Title 20 and Title 21 development standards that are pertinent to wireless telecommunications facilities. In this case, it is less than 35 feet tall. It is 34 feet, nine inches. 35 feet is the absolute maximum for these types of facilities. But the existing streetlight pole, I'll note, is approximately 30 feet tall. So they are working with a taller pole to begin with. All of the equipment is concealed within the pole underground, and again, alternative sites were considered. But lastly, I'm not gonna go into each appeal point. I'll let the appellant talk about that, and the representing attorney or legal counsel for AT&amp;T can also talk about that. But there are three main points to the appeal. Once again, not citing concerns with this particular location, rather calling into question the integrity of the master license agreement and the applicant submitting the application. So with that, staff is recommending that you conduct a new public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA, and adopt a resolution to approve the minor use permit and coastal development permit, which will uphold the Planning Commission's decision and deny the appeal. As I said, I'm available for questions. Lauren Whittingen-Witlinger is here as well, and you can roll right into the appellant's and applicant presentations if you please.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council to Mr. Sadiba? No questions? All right, so now we'll hear from the applicant, who will be given up, up to 15 minutes for his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Avery and council. My name is Corey Autry. I work with Wireless Policy Group here tonight, representing AT&amp;T. And just to 100% confirm, you would like to hear from AT&amp;T first before you hear from the appellant.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're on the same page. So I also have with me tonight Judy Woolen from AT&amp;T's external affairs team, and Franklin Arusko from AT&amp;T's network development vendor. And also on the Zoom call, we have Emily Murray from Allen Matkins, who is AT&amp;T's outside counsel. And I will quickly turn it over to Emily, but first, I want to just state that I was very involved in the negotiation of the master license agreement that the council approved in February of 2019. And I can assure you, it was not a fly-by-night, you know, overnight sensation. It was an 18-month-long negotiation with city staff, very savvy negotiation, with your attorney involved, AT&amp;T's attorney, and many of us business folks. So I just thought it'd be important to, you know, kind of share a little bit of that history. And with that, it looks like we have Emily on the line. So I will turn it over to AT&amp;T's outside counsel, Emily Murray, to talk more in detail about the appeal items.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you hear me okay on the Zoom? Thumbs up on that. My name is Emily Murray. I'm with the law from Allen Matkins. I'm outside legal counsel to AT&amp;T. I want to just briefly address the legal issues raised in the appeal, and then Corey and team can certainly answer technical questions that folks have about the location, how it was selected, the facility, how it operates, and the like. There were three primary points made by the appellant, legal arguments made in the appeal. The first is that the party to the master license agreement is not the same as the applicant. The master license agreement was signed by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. And on the application, the party signing the application is AT&amp;T Mobility on behalf of New Singular Wireless PCS. AT&amp;T has provided to staff the recorded fictitious business name statement filed with the county clerk for Orange County that indicates that those two entities are the same, that AT&amp;T Mobility is a fictitious business name for New Singular Wireless PCS. So that, that entire argument is, is just a red herring. They are the same entity, the party to the, to the master license agreement and the party who submitted the application. The second legal argument was that insufficient proof of insurance has been provided to the city. Again, the city attorney and city staff have confirmed that they've received all necessary documentation to confirm that the applicant is properly insured, particularly with regard to EMF. AT&amp;T is a self-insured for pollution coverage, which includes hazardous material in EMF. So again, there's no legal validity to the arguments around insurance. And the final argument is really, functionally, I think, the same as the first argument. The city's code requires that an applicant enter into a master license agreement with the city. In this case, AT&amp;T, the New Singular Wireless, entered into the master license agreement. That is the same entity as the applicant's, AT&amp;T Mobility. So there, the applicant has entered into a master license agreement with the city and has satisfied those code requirements. So none of these arguments have any legal merit, pose any risk to the city. The city attorney so advised the Planning Commission when the same arguments were presented to the Planning Commission, and those arguments haven't evolved or been restated, or, you know, they're, they're the same failing legal arguments that were raised below. So AT&amp;T, again, respectfully requests that the appeal be denied by the city council this evening, and we would be happy, Corey and the team, to answer any questions that you have about the facility itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Do we have any council members who have questions of the applicant?
So we, yeah, this is Corey again. I just wanted to remind the council that we did give a small cell overview presentation when we got the MLA approved. And so we hadn't planned on going into a lot of overview detail, but we're happy to go into detail on the specific location that's before you this evening, although we do feel it was very well vetted by the zoning administrator and also the Planning Commission. So if you'd like us to go into more detail on how we chose that location, we're happy to do that. But I thought I'd ask before we just spent the time on that.
Any questions? No questions?
Thank you.
All right. No other comments from the applicant? We'll be coming back to you.
Thank you.
So now we'll hear from the appellant, who will be given up to 15 minutes for their presentation.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Pollock.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. My name is Mark Pollock, and as has been explained by staff, I represent a citizen of Newport Beach who has preferred to remain anonymous for fear of retribution by filing this appeal. I have appealed the decision from the zoning administrator on this deployment to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission sustained the decision, the zoning administrator, and I now bring the issue to you. This particular appeal is not in the nature of an opposition to the deployment and placement of the technology. Rather, it's to scrutinize the way the permit was issued because of our collective concern about the liability of the city in the event that the placement ends up injuring someone, causes fire, or some other problem potentially related to EMF exposure. So initially, if I may walk you through, I provided written materials to each member of the council, and there are exhibits attached. As Mr. Autry pointed out, the master license agreement is required for placement of the technology on city property. This pole is city property. There was a master license agreement crafted consistent with Title 20.49.080. And as Mr. Autry pointed out, it was signed by the entity which was identified on it as New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. It did not list a DBA. It did not list a fictitious business name on that master license agreement. You can see by looking at Exhibit A, attached behind my brief, it says, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company licensee. It does not list a DBA. The reason that this is important from the city's perspective is that consistent with this master license agreement, the licensee under the agreement indemnifies and holds the city harmless for liability. In addition, it must provide a general liability policy of insurance. And the city has requested that that particular policy of insurance not exclude EMF coverage under a pollution exclusion. So when the zoning administrator issued the permit, the permit was not issued to AT&amp;T Mobility. It was simply issued to AT&amp;T. That's not consistent with the master license agreement. Even if AT&amp;T was a DBA, AT&amp;T is not a corporation in California. AT&amp;T is not an LLC in California. If you look at Exhibit B, this is the Secretary of State's information filed by New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. If you go down to Item 5B, you will see that the manager of that company is AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation. That's not a DBA. That's a Delaware corporation. AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation is not registered to do business in California. AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation cannot legally do business in the state of California. So if you look at Exhibit D, which is the fictitious business name statement provided by the company to staff on this matter, you'll see that the signature at the bottom right for the entity that submitted it and filed it was a corporation that cannot do business in the state of California, AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, comma, manager. This document is void. It has no legal authority. AT&amp;T Mobility is not a legal DBA for New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. All that I was asking this entity to do, the Planning Commission, and before them, the zoning administrator, was to correct the permit and put the permit in the name of the entity that signed the master license agreement, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. By doing that, we would ensure that the indemnity provisions of that document are legal and enforceable. Right now, they're not. Moving on to the issue of insurance, I did a Public Records Act request as part of pursuing this appeal, and I was astounded. If you'll turn to the three emails which I've attached as F1, F2, and F3, on F1, Fauna Shrago from the city requested a full copy of the entire policy of insurance from New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. And that request was made on behalf of the risk manager for the city, so they could evaluate the exclusions and limitations on coverage. If you turn to F2, you get the response from Dan Bozenilik, the senior technical manager for AT&amp;T Mobility. He says, "Fauna, I left you a voicemail last Friday. We reached out to our risk management group regarding this issue. Unfortunately, AT&amp;T is unable to issue a renewal certificate of insurance prior to the renewal date. AT&amp;T renews every year at the same time. The certificate does not entirely expire until June 1st, 2020." So when the certificate expired, they obtained a new certificate, and that certificate now is in the name of New Singular Wireless. Then the next paragraph is very telling. "We did confirm that AT&amp;T is self-insured for pollution coverage. We do not produce copies of AT&amp;T's insurance policy because it is confidential and proprietary in nature." So the risk manager never got to see the policy. It was never produced. If you turn to the next email, this email at the top is authored by Corey Autry, who was there this evening and who presented before I was given an opportunity to speak. Mr. Autry says, "Hi, Fauna. I wanted to provide you additional information we obtained from AT&amp;T's risk manager." Yes, AT&amp;T always self-insures for pollution coverage. And he goes on to talk about the pollution coverage and the self-insurance, and then he says, "We are insured for EMF." Period. "No proof has been provided to the city that EMF coverage exists, or in what amount. No proof has been provided to the city that self-insurance by AT&amp;T provides coverage for pollution, or that there is no exclusion under the existing policy." If you turn to the next item, which is Exhibit G, this is the certificate of property self-insurance provided by New Singular Wireless LLC to the city. It does not list pollution. It does not list EMF. It says flood, earthquake, business interruption, and loss of rents. Accordingly, this entity has not provided your city- Accordingly, this entity has not provided your city with proof of adequate insurance as requested by your own risk manager. It has not complied with the terms and conditions of the master license agreement, and my recommendation to this body would be that the matter be sent back to the planning commission and that AT&amp;T, or AT&amp;T Mobility, or New Singular Wireless LLC resubmit the application under a proper name so that the city can be assured that the indemnity provision is in force and effect, and further that AT&amp;T, or AT&amp;T Mobility, or New Singular Wireless LLC provide a copy of their policy of insurance with copies of exclusions and proof of self-insurance for EMF coverage and pollution. And on that basis, I would submit it. Thank you for considering my position, and I would just ask that if individual council members speak, could you please identify your name, because I've got a court reporter transcribing this proceeding. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions for Mr. Pollak?
I have a question for the city attorney. Do you want to comment on those assertions that Mr. Pollak has made? My name is Diane Dixon.
Yeah, so we took a look at all the arguments that were made, and we've gone over them with staff, and we think the entity is the proper entity, we think the insurance is proper, we don't see any legal issue here. I think you can make all the findings that the planning commission made and uphold their decision.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions from council? So we'll now hear from the public, who will be given up to three minutes each to make
Thank you, Vice Mayor Avery, and members of the council. This is Jim Mosher. As I tried to explain in writing, my understanding is that when an appeal comes to you, the hearing tonight is what is called de novo, which means it's a totally fresh look by you at the application that the planning commission looked at. It's not limited to the issues that the appellate may have raised. So I want to bring to your attention a slightly different issue, and that is the search for alternative sites or installations to the one that's being proposed. As you may know, our zoning code and our coastal implementation program both rank various kinds of installations in order of their obtrusiveness or desirability for approval. As Ben mentioned in his presentation, this installation on a streetlight in the public right-of-way is not the highest priority. It's what's called Class III. An installation of the antennas on a light pole that was on private property would apparently be Class II, which is more desirable, and an antenna on a commercial rooftop which was hidden or disguised would be even more desirable, Class I. I don't know if utility poles or light poles on private property were investigated, but as to the antennas on rooftops, the highest priority, I have heard at this location and elsewhere that they aren't looked at because AT&amp;T's antennas do not work. Their small cell technology does not work on rooftops. It has to be put on the top of a utility pole. And my only comment to that is our president says that the United States is the greatest nation in the world, if not the universe, and the idea that we cannot come up with small cell technology that works on a rooftop, I think, is a little bit sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any phones? Hello, please go ahead.
Thank you for my time tonight to support the appeal, to make sure you deny this small cell facility, because there are many problems with this application and it remains incomplete to this day. I have studied the application files intensely. In fact, I'm very experienced at this. We have now over 200 complaints to the FCC for a very common issue, and that is that these things are going forward without required NEPA review. And so it's very simple to take the calculations to figure out whether or not NEPA review is needed, and in this case, it is. And unfortunately, NEPA review doesn't exist here, so you cannot actually issue this permit until there's NEPA review done by the applicant. Here's the rule that we're talking about. It's Title 47 CFR, Section 1.1307B, and they talk about exactly what is needed when an antenna is less than 10 meters from the ground. They mean the lower edge of that antenna. And the total power output of all channels is greater than 1,000 watts of ERP. Well, this turns out to be a Galtronics antenna that's very common. They use it in different cities, including Mission Viejo. And you add that all up, and you see that you have 10 ports, and you look at the maximum output that's capable for the antenna, and multiply it by its antenna gain and add it all up. 4,970 watts of ERP. That is over, just about five times greater than the requirement for the rule, greater than 1,000 watts ERP. Now, we just take out a tape measure, and we say with a pole that's 34 feet 9 inches tall, you subtract 24 inches for the height of the antenna, you're at 32 feet 9 inches. That is below 10 meters. Bing, you qualify by rule. There's nobody's opinion here. This just must happen. And so this one actually will also be reported to the FCC, and we will make sure that every applicant follows proper procedure when they actually want to put small cells in. The reason you want to do this is when you have 5,000 watts ERP, literally feet from people's homes, now you have to take a look at what are the frequencies. They said they were 4G only, but actually, the antenna can do more than that. In fact, they have 5G frequencies on this antenna, and so those are 3550 to 3751, 50 to 5925 megahertz. So even much of the application has fraudulent information in it, and they try to hide that information from you. And this is what they're in the business of doing every day. They're trying to bamboozle city councils into believing that this is a small cell. Hey, the only metric that matters is how many radiation units you have in your bedroom. That's what matters. And when you compare it to a macro tower, you should have something that gives you five bars on a cell phone. That would be .002. What this one is going to do, it's probably less than 50,000. It's probably going to be like 25,000. But heck, you know, that's still 12 and a half million times more. That's not necessary.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Nothing on the phone. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and the matter returns to council.
The appellant gets five-minute rebuttal. I'm sorry, the applicant gets five-minute rebuttal.
Excuse me. The applicant gets five minutes for any rebuttal to that last comments.
The speaker referenced NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act. That's a federal law that applies to federal agency decisions and not to state and local government. CEQA applies in California, as I'm sure you all know. I won't otherwise respond to that comment. I'm not sure I followed all of it. I think I've already addressed the legal arguments. There's nothing new to report there, and we concur with the city attorney's assessment. Corey, do you have anything further to add?
Can't hear.
Comments regarding private property was maybe interpreted incorrectly. We're not saying small cell technology can't work mechanically on private property. We're saying it does not work from a radio frequency propagation as far as... Can you hear me?
Mr. Autry, my apologies, the speaker, the microphone was not on when you started, so go ahead.
Oh, okay. So I get a second chance. That's good. I was just responding to Mr. Mosher's comment regarding why we can't go on private property. And it's not that mechanically, small cells wouldn't necessarily work on private property, but it boils down to two major items. One has to do with the fact that we have rights to be in the public right-of-way. There are a number of laws that support AT&amp;T's access to the right-of-way. I won't go into all of them. So that's, you know, we don't have rights to be on all these different private properties with this technology. And the other major reason is the RF propagation doesn't work the same. If we use infrastructure in the public right-of-way on utility poles and light poles, then we're designing these at a consistent antenna height, and we're also able to propagate that antenna signal in a 360-degree pattern around the pole, and it really lends itself. Small cell technology is best deployed in the public right-of-way. So just to answer to Mr. Mosher.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel, do we have any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion. Are we at that point?
Yes, we are. I'd just like some direction, Erin, to make sure we're clear on...
I'm sorry, what's that? No, no. So yeah, so we're, you close the public hearing, and then we'd be ready for a motion if there's no items to be discussed.
Public hearing is closed. And now...
All right, I'd like to make a motion to uphold the decision of the planning commission approving the minor use permit.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All is in favor.
You guys have fun.
That was a long time.
All right, we'll move to item number 18, COVID update. Ms. Leong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and council members. I'll keep this fairly brief, as there's just a few things. Let's go back here. Just, I think, at this point, people are fairly well aware that the Orange County has been moved off of the watch, the monitoring list. This is now day three, so that's very good news. So that's a real good positive to it, but I think the important thing is kind of the question of now what, and what we are waiting for from our city side and for our businesses in particular is updated guidance for when we are off the monitoring list, what can open, and in what fashion. So the governor has certainly talked about releasing the new guidance. We are anxiously awaiting it. We're hearing right now it's going to be later this week, and certainly, the sooner that comes out, the better, and that's really critical for us. And I do want to make the distinction, because you are hearing a lot right now about a 14-day period, and that's really for the schools, that's specific for the schools to be able to reopen without getting particular authorization from the state, and that requires to be 14 days off of the monitoring list. So that's separate from our own businesses and our own operations there. So I just want to make sure and clarify that point. And just, I think in general, the numbers are looking very good from the information we're getting from the county side. They're saying all the data were under the metrics and that all the trends continue to point that way. So right now, with all the efforts from all the residents and businesses, it appears that the county is fairly confident that we will stay on this track right now with the current trends that are going, so I think that's really positive. And then the other thing I do want to note is the county has been setting up additional testing sites. Part of the metrics requires a level of testing, and particularly with the schools hopefully going on to reopening, they are coordinating to have more testing available. So as an example, in addition to an Anaheim site, they now are going to be at the Orange County Fairgrounds in Costa Mesa, which is very near us, opening this Wednesday. So I think that will be helpful with the testing capacity and turnaround there. And then, just real briefly, because we have gotten updates on this prior from Mr. Juerges, but we continue on processing applications for the emergency permit for the outdoor usage, and we're up over 100 on those permits, so we continue to put a lot of resources in there to be processing those as quickly as we can. On the small business support grant side, we are also expending a lot of resources to get all the documentation in and cutting the checks, so I'm happy to say that we're at over 180 checks issued getting those grants out. We are finding that there are some who haven't come back with the documentation, so we are reaching into our second list, those on the waitlist, so reaching out to about 100 of them. So we want to get the full allocation out there of the funds we have, of the COVID funds. And then I just want to put the reminder that we had an allocation of monies that we put together, almost half a million, about right, right, in CDBG funding for business grants. So that application period goes through August 28th, you can see up here, and there's that website to get more information and to apply as well. And I think that's my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
So, sorry, one thing real quick. So there's, before, I want to send two letters, both of them to the governor asking for guidance. One of them is, we all received an email from Lori Morris talking about in-person voting and seeking guidance on that. Normally, in a normal year, we would obviously have multiple places for people to be able to vote in person. Right now, that doesn't appear to be allowed under governor's orders. I think it'd be helpful to at least just request guidance for in-person voting, and I don't want to send something like that, or the second one, which I'll describe in just a second, which is, one of the categories of business that was listed were barber shops, nail salons, and beauty salons. I'd like to send a letter on behalf of those entities as well, asking for, you know, reopening guidance there quickly. And the reason for that is because those in particular are small, they're always small businesses, they're always owned by folks who have invested a lot of their own personal capital in, and those are businesses that are already licensed. They have to go through extensive protocols on sanitation before COVID, and now that COVID has hit, they had extensive, the state had already put out guidance that was rather extensive on PPE. They had invested a lot of money into that PPE, and then they were shut down, and those are not exactly businesses that can go outside easily. And so it would be, and as far as I know, they didn't, there hasn't been a trace back to those businesses for an outbreak.
And they operate in very sanitary conditions.
Exactly, and they operate in sanitary conditions. And as far as I can tell, California is the only state in the country right now that has closed those businesses. So I'd like to just, it would be respectful, but it would just be a letter seeking guidance on that, and I'd also like to request guidance on in-person voting. But I didn't want to do that without at least, you know, discussing, or at least mentioning that to us. I can't take a vote, but unless people strongly object to that, I'd like to, I'd like to put those two letters together and just send, basically, under my authority, under the policy ordinance that we've got. But like I said, I didn't want to do that without throwing it out there first. Okay, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Fall back to your slide if you just, on the grants that we've given. Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we get 2.1 million? And so we have given out 900-some?
Oh, no, that's the number of... Oh, no, that's the number of...
900,000?
Yeah. Oh, wow. I could have Tara Finnegan come up and talk a little more.
She's nodding and talking. So we've given out close to a million. Okay, that's wonderful, to 183 businesses. And so what's the status on giving away, presenting grants for the remainder of that money?
So the remaining 100 people... So this week, SBDC went through our list of the 800 and some that weren't selected, and randomly selected the next group of 100. We're kind of vetting that list in-house right now to make sure that they meet some of the basic requirements. They'll notify... We'll notify them this week, and they'll start the process of getting their documentation together, and we'll get them in the funding process as quickly as we can.
So you think by end of September, that we will have dispersed all the 2.1 million?
We have to do it by the end of... By December 1.
Well, I hope it's much sooner. I mean, these businesses are just barely clinging to life.
Yes. It is part of the business, though. They have to turn in their documentation. That's been kind of a challenging part of the process, is getting all that gathered, so.
I appreciate you working with all them. So, very good. Thank you very much.
All right, any other questions or discussions? Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Chief, can you come up? Fire chief? I gotta tell you, poor Chief Boyle, because Chief Lewis knows how to be on the stand as a police officer, and Chief Boyle just doesn't have that same training. But he's very intelligent, and he has some medical background, which he'll deny to you, but he almost went to med school. You look much better in uniform than probably a scrub, so. So, chief, obviously, we had some outbreaks in the city staff in the past. Could you tell us currently how your fire and lifeguards are doing?
Yes, so the beginning of July, we started out with a couple of positive lifeguards and a couple of positive firefighters. And with contact tracing, we quarantined several. And subsequently, while they were quarantined, some more became positive. So throughout the month of July, in about a three-and-a-half-week period, we had 72 total lifeguards and firefighters either quarantined or test positive. We currently have all 72 of them back to work full-time now.
No complications, all recovered fully, luckily, and feeling healthy.
Healthy and back to work.
That's great. And I know that we had the junior guard program, and that seemed to be very successful, and the children are really happy to participate in that. Thank you again for listening to our request and really getting creative pretty impressively. Would you say that program was successful, and there were no hiccups to be aware of? Or is there anything we have to learn from that?
That program was extremely successful. We didn't have any known participants that were aware of or instructors that become quarantined or test positive, or even really become sick for that matter. So I attribute that to the instructors. There was that small outbreak, the lifeguard side of the house before that started, which really got their attention, I believe. So they were really good with the distancing, with the instruction to the kids, with their masks, and they really just did a good job.
Well, I think that's great, and we've all seen on social media, and we've all celebrated. The mayor had a moving piece about that, all celebrated for these children who had opportunity to come in contact with their peers and to do something outside of their homes and to participate in the legacy program. So I can't thank you enough. We still get thank-you emails. And obviously, you send some of them to us, which we appreciate as well. So thank you to you and your staff for the excellent staffing and planning for that. Are there any other concerns you have going into the fall for the sake of our first responders that are under your purview?
Well, obviously, right now on the news are the fires, so we have 17 firefighters deployed up across Napa County, Santa Cruz, Vacaville, and Monterey. Three fire engines with four on each, two battalion chiefs, and three overhead positions where they go and they help the incident command. So that's obviously becoming an issue. There's a lot of lightning that we obviously can't control. The resources are spread thin. And the base camps up there are taking on a whole new look and feel because of COVID and how people go to food lines and how they use showers and how they sleep in sleep trailers. So they're really trying to adjust up there. But as far as the COVID, we really tightened the reins, if you will. We got our arms around it, I believe. We had to adjust some of our paradigm thinking inside fire stations, inside lifeguard headquarters, which we did. And I don't have concerns, obviously, anymore for that. I think we faced it head-on. Now my concerns have shifted towards the wildland fires, and I just hope that San Diego, San Bernardino, or Orange County doesn't experience what Northern California is seeing right now.
Well, I'm sorry you're going through this, as chief. And it's kind of funny, just piggybacking on the excellent work of our police department. Now we're seeing excellent work of our fire department. It's been a really stressful year, but we've had a banner year as far as performance goes, and even a rescue on a sailboat. It's been quite a year. If we can do anything for you, let us know. You never ask, because I think you get everything you need from Grace and from staff. But we really appreciate everything you're doing, and our prayers are with your team. And thank you again for the great job with junior guards.
We will be asking for some equipment in September, so you'll see me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Strike while you can.
Great, all right. Thank you, Grace. We'll go to public comment on this item. Any public comment on this item? All right, any calls on this item? All right, let's bring it back. Sorry, let me just get this. All right, Madam Clerk?
Motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions? All right, I have two adjournments. I'm going to read them both. The first adjournment for former council member Dick Nichols. I reached out to his wife, his widow, Sandy, and asked her to help me write this. So I'm reading a slightly shortened version of what Sandy provided to me. Richard Dick Nichols was born on October 25, 1939, in Ottawa, Illinois. His family moved to South Bend, Indiana. He graduated Northwestern with three degrees, a BS in engineering science, an MS and PhD in electrical... I'm sorry, in chemical engineering. After graduation, Dick accepted a job in Southern California as an engineer and paid inventor, developing new products in the aerospace, aircraft, and fuel marketing industry, culminating with him holding multiple patents. In 1973, Dick married Sandy Gladys, and they settled in Coronado Mar. They raised the three children, Kathy, Matt, and Rich. In May of 1975, Dick and Sandy started RA Nichols Engineering to provide engineering consulting services primarily for the petrochemical industry. Dick's work was instrumental in the development of gas station pollution control technology. He consulted with the American Petroleum Institute in developing the first air pollution rules governing the petroleum industry. And these rules were later adopted by the US EPA, the California Air Resources Board, and many other air quality districts. In 1978, Dick introduced the Rain Ring-style vapor holder to the petroleum industry and has installed over 200 systems in the USA and internationally. Dick was the chief engineer for Rain until he retired in 2015, and Rain remains a family business operated by his children. Dick was passionate about politics, starting during his college days. In the late 1980s, Dick was president of the Coronado Mar Community Association. Later on, he was active with Spawn and Greenlight. He and Sandy became active with the California Republican Assembly, and Dick was elected CRA Senate Director. He became president of that unit of the CRA, which later was renamed the Newport Beach Republican Assembly. Dick was elected and served on the Newport Beach City Council from 2002 to 2006. Dick coached ASO soccer for several years, which, by the way, I would have liked to have seen. His boys decided they wanted to play junior All-American football, so Dick volunteered to be assistant coach. Later on, when his boys moved to CDM High School, he was a volunteer prosh football coach for three years. Dick believed in service to God, country, and family. His belief in God provides solace for his family and those that loved him. He's survived by his wife Sandy, his children and their families, Kathy, Stephen, Jacob, and Marissa Oberfeld, Matt and Dylan Nichols, Rich, Joan, Natalie, Andrew, and Hannah Nichols. I'd also like to adjourn tonight in memory of John Hamilton. John Hamilton was proud of his city, his school, and most of all, his family. His late mother, Patricia Riley-Hitt, gave him an early example of giving back in big ways. She was the first female national co-chair of a presidential campaign for Richard Nixon in 1968 and served as Assistant Secretary of Health, Education, and Welfare, the highest-ranking woman in President Nixon's first administration. John graduated from USC in 1964 and worked his way to eventually being president of the Hamilton Company, a residential and commercial real estate agency in Newport Beach. John ensured that his business success translated into community success. He was involved with a number of charitable and community organizations, including Goodwill Industries, Big Brothers, the Pacific Club, USC Associates, Marine Corps Scholarship Foundation, and the Richard Nixon Foundation. He drove the development of the USC Athletic Hall of Fame in 1994 and served as its chairman until 2015. For his efforts, he was inducted into the USC Athletic Hall of Fame in 2015. He also received USC's Alumni Service Award. In 1994, he founded the Newport Sports Museum in Newport Beach, which housed 12,000 items of sports memorabilia until closing in 2014. Besides displaying rare sports artifacts from around the world, the Newport Sports Museum's mission was to keep youngsters in school and off of drugs by getting them involved in athletics. In 2003, John co-founded and chaired the Impact Foundation at the Pacific Club in Newport Beach, which annually awards the Lot Impact Trophy to the nation's top defensive college football player. He's survived by his wife Kathy, who has had her own long service, long period of service in this community, their son John Jr., daughters Kate and Jill, brother Rick, and 10 grandchildren. John passed away on August 5, and the world is better off because he fought the good fight. He finished the race, and he kept the faith. We stand adjourned.